Okay, we're back in session. We are ready for, we are ready for item 5.1.
Item 5.1, public hearing to consider adoption of Resolution Number 20-7815, declaring a certain structure located at 320 East Bond in the city of Salina to be unsafe and dangerous, directing this structure be repaired or removed, and establishing a reasonable amount of time which within, within which the repair or removal of such structures shall commence and be completed.
Okay, thank you. Sean Peltier.
Sean Peltier, building official, City of Salina. I have a PowerPoint here. It's gonna be, kinda be separating into two parts. I'm gonna, first of all, it's gonna be a little bit of background on the process of the dangerous structure, what we do, and then I'll, I'll let you know, you know, when the, when the public hearing part actually starts, and I'll start giving evidence and things like that toward that. The Building Services, Services is responsible for ensuring that the property in the city of Salina meets various building and property maintenance codes and does not pose a risk to general public. To meet this goal, staff responds to citizen complaints as well as staff-initiated inspections regarding structures that appear to present a danger to the public. An inspection of the property is completed using criteria in Chapter 31 of the Salina Municipal Code and entitled, entitled property maintenance. KSA 121750 provides the authority for cities to repair the, or remove dangerous structures by complying with applicable statutory procedures. The first three of these, we've already gone through those steps. First is to pass a resolution to conduct a public hearing. Did that on February 24th. We had to publish that two times, 30 days prior to the hearing, which we did on February 28th and March 6th. A copy of the resolution mailed to interested parties. Those were identified in a title search. Those mailings were completed on March 6th. However, the, they only had one interested party, and they didn't accept the mailing. So we did contact him by phone and, and mailed them another packet, FedExed out to them. So they did have the information that we're talking about. Number four is we're gonna conduct the public hearing, which is what we're doing today. City Commission will hear evidence from the building official, as well as property owner or other interested parties, as to whether or not the structure is unsafe or dangerous. At the conclusion of the hearing, City Commission shall determine if the structure is unsafe or dangerous. If it's dangerous, then a resolution must be passed by the commission. If it's not dangerous, then the staff will handle it as we would other property maintenance issues. If they don't consider it dangerous, then we'll go, go that route via violation notice and possible municipal court action. If they, if it is considered dangerous and a resolution is passed, the resolution shall establish a reasonable time for the property owner to commence and complete repairs or demolition of the structure, and also state that if the property owner fails to start to make repairs, the city will cause the structure to be repaired and/or demolished. And then the resolution will be published in the city's official newspaper and mailed to identified interested parties. Number seven, if the city is to perform the demolition, state law provides the process for going through that as well. City may salvage parts of the structure to get a partial reimbursement for that. Any costs beyond that are billed to the property owner and payable within 30 days. If the property owner fails to make payment, then the costs are placed on special assessment against the land on which the structure was located. Says there, there is a fiscal note that we talk about insurance proceeds and things like that. City does not possess any funds for that. The property was uninsured at the time of the fire. So we don't have a, an insurance proceeds check for this property. At the conclusion of the public hearing, the City Commission, we've given you four items for your consideration. Number one, you can approve Resolution 207815, finding that the structure is unsafe or dangerous, directing that the structure be repaired or removed, doing so fixing at a time of 60 days, honor before June 5th, within repair or removal shall be completed, and authorizing staff to proceed with the demolition or repair if they fail to comply. Number two, approved resolution, as in, the resolutions 207815 has indicated in option one above, but fixing alternative and reasonable times to, for commencement and completion, and authorizing staff to proceed with the demolition or repair if they fail to comply. Number three, you can postpone consideration of the resolution pending additional information as needed, or you can decline to approve the resolution, resolution, having a hard time with that word today, upon finding the structure is not unsafe or dangerous. Okay. This is where the public hearing would start.
Okay, this time we will open up the public hearing concerning 320 East Bond Street.
Address is 320 East Bond Street. Got your legal description, as noted there on the slide. Building description is a single-family dwelling. It has one detached garage approximately 18 by 30 feet. Property status is vacant, and the taxes are current. This is our identified parties list. As I said, Jason Rogers. Lauren spoke to him on Friday, April 3rd, and told him about the, made sure he was aware of the hearing. We FedExed a copy of the packet to him, so they did receive that, and also gave him information as how to call in and, and be a participant in the meeting. Let's see here. Okay, background on it. A fire occurred on the property on March 11th, 2018, damaged the entire interior of the structure, as well as structural elements, including wall studs and ceiling joists. Owner of the property is deceased, and there is not a current owner on file. Property was uninsured. The city does not have any insurance proceeds. And then this last one, we, we did make contact at, at that time with the, with the sister of the, of the deceased, and as well as Mr. Rogers, who was the, the other identified party. She has no plans to make repairs or demolish the structure, and has been made aware of the public hearing date, as well as contacted if she'd like to participate.
Just to clear up my confusion, is there two owners to the property?
Well, neither one is the owner. They're both relation to the deceased.
So Jason was obviously not the deceased.
No.
Okay. But just wanted...
I don't know if it's helpful. One other clarification, Mr. Peltier is referring to city insurance. There's a state statute that provides it in the event of a fire damage or insurance claim, the insurance, if we're on file with the state, which we are, then a percentage of those insurance proceeds are to be paid directly to the city. We can hold on to those funds to ensure repairs are made or use them toward repairs. In this particular case, there were no insurance proceeds at all, let alone anything that came to the city.
The fire, fire occurred March 11th, 2018, engulfed the entire structure. Post-fire investigation was performed after notification from the Salina Fire Department on March 12th. Violation notices were sent March 15th, 2018, and December 12th, 2019. Dangerous structure assessment was done January 25th, 2019. We'll go over the items that they need to correct below, or in a little, in a little bit here. Request for public hearing, we already covered February 24th, and then we did a drive-by curb inspection, says April 6th, but actually I drove by there yesterday. It looks exactly the same as the pictures you'll see here in a moment. There's the front of the house. As you can see, there's the notices are taped to the door there, but the windows are all boarded up. You can see fire damage on the outside there where the flames have, had rolled up out of there, as well as, I think that would be the east side. Up the back door, windows, windows and doors are all boarded up to help try and keep vagrants and people like that out. But, and I can go back to those pictures if you guys wanna see a closer look at them. But, let's see. Required repairs, property is fire damaged to a point where 100% of the interior floor area is uninhabitable. It's pretty well gutted on the inside of there. I didn't get any pictures of the inside right for, for this beating, because it's, it's mortared up, but it is, it is gutted on the inside of there. There is structural fire damage to wall studs and ceiling and floor joists that needs to be repaired. Electric and gas meters have been pulled and cannot be restored until the damage is either repaired or removed. All the windows and doors of the property have been boarded up to prevent entrance into the structure, and will need to be repaired in order to approve occupancy. In conclusion, the building official has determined that the structure is unsafe and dangerous. The building official therefore requests the government body make findings by resolution that the structure is unsafe and dangerous. Number two, direct the structure to be repaired or removed. Number three, fix a reasonable time within which the repair or removal of the structure can be completed pursuant to KSA 121750. And then I have, have the dates suggested there, which I have written in the resolution as well, honor before June 5th, 2020. I give them two months for that, because I, like I said, we talked to the, the other interested parties, and the, at the, at the time we'd spoken to them, didn't seem interested or willing to do anything with it.
Commissioner Frans, here, that being the case, why do we need to provide 60 days?
We don't necessarily. I just, I thought that, given, given, on, on the resolution, we give 30 days in order to commence work. Seeing that they probably wouldn't commence then, then the, then the resolution would come into effect where we could start taking bids to get it taken down. But, just statute-wise, give them a reasonable amount of time to at least make an attempt, or maybe they'll change their mind or whatever.
Is, if I had a question related, should I ask it now or after the?
Let's, let's open it up, see if there's any public comment, and then we'll, since it's open.
Anyone on the call wishes to comment, they need to press star nine. Again, we've got two, four, six, eight, 10 callers, and none of them have indicated they wish to speak.
Okay. Okay. Commissioner Davis.
Commissioner Davis here. Did Mr. Jason Rogers give an indication that he was gonna try to sell the property on the open market, or?
No.
And if the city demolishes the building, is he personally responsible for that bill? I mean, is he, he's the true owner of the property, or he's just a relative of the person who owned it?
Relative of the person who owned it.
So would he, would the lien then be against him as owner of the property?
Be against the property.
And where I'm going is, if, if he knows he wants nothing to do with the property, if this is a property, the city should consider just absorbing, accepting, or however, whatever verb you'd use, and adding it to our land bank.
Mayor, Mayor Hoppick here. I have a question. So who was the actual owner of record?
The actual, his last name was Rogers, and his name is escaping me right off the top of my head.
Because, and this may be a question for, for legal counsel. So there's a brother or sister, where did he have any, any children? Because that would be who would actually be the next of kin that would, would actually on a, would actually have an option, or would have the potential for ownership, correct?
That's correct. I was about to ask if we knew the date of death of the record owner.
The date of death was during the fire. He was, he was deceased in, in the building.
In 2000, okay.
The situation, or, excuse me, under that circumstance, if he had had a will, that will would no, would be of no longer any effect if it's not admitted to probate within six months from the date of death. That's why I was interested in the date of death. So any determination of heirship would ordinarily be by a dissent proceeding, but it would require a dissent proceeding in the Saline County District Court for that transfer, if you will, or that recognition of the passage of title to the descendants under the Kansas Rules of Intestacy, or when you do not have a will, how the statutes determine that the property passes. That would be effective upon the entry of that order by the district court. It sounds like we may very well have a situation where no one would petition for that dissent proceeding, and that we likely have a scenario where it would, any cost incurred in the demolition would be paid, assessed against the property, and ultimately work through the tax foreclosure process. When you get to that point where, of a sheriff's sale, under that scenario, the city is able to bid in the amount that it has paid in the demolition costs, but in order to take title, it is necessary not only to bid in that amount, but also to pay any outstanding general property taxes that might be due and owing at that time. So that's a financial analysis that usually can't occur until you get to that point in the process, as one looks at the lot value and the, relative to the outstanding taxes.
Commissioner Davis again. So can we assume that with Jason Rogers being listed as the owner, he has either been granted title to this property, or the court's already passed it on to him, or?
County records currently indicate the owner to be Justin Rogers, rather than Jason Rogers. I think, I think Jason Rogers is, is a relative, but not necessarily the record owner of the property.
Would Justin be the one who passed away?
Yes.
Yes.
So then, can the court make a family member be the heir to the property?
Uh, no. That dissent proceeding would be by petition.
The reason I ask is because, obviously whoever becomes property owner is gonna inherit some debt along, or some expenses with this property.
I, I would imagine that is why we've not seen an initiation of a dissent proceeding or any other sort of proceeding to address the transfer of title by virtue of the record owner's death.
Commissioner Frans, given the circumstances, is there any way to accelerate this process instead of waiting for a tax sale? And is this property something we would be interested in for the land bank? You know, it just strikes me that it's been two years to get to this point, which strikes me as an extraordinarily long, long period of time. And then it's gonna be three, or maybe longer, three years or maybe longer, before it gets to tax sale. And I'm just wondering if we can push that cart on down the road a ways, instead of just having the property sit there and accumulate taxes for three years, which just drives up the acquisition price.
Mike's Craig. The, we have had instances where, as we've contacted a property owner that doesn't have interest in the property, they offer to just give it to us, or transfer it in some way. But they are the record owner, and we're able to enter into some type of an agreement with them. Given the process that Mr. Banksen described, I'm not sure how, we don't have a party to enter into an agreement.
That's my question, is there some way to do this?
Mayor Hoppick, if we were to do something like that, and again, I'm gonna look at, look at legal counsel, but at a minimum, we would have to get probably affidavit of heirship that would tell who would actually have the ability to, to deed out. In most cases, you'd want a determination of dissent done, which would tell who the heirs are, and then you would, you could serve them. So it's not quite as easy as, as, there'd be a little bit of work and some cost involved. But I, I kind of agree with you. The taxes are current through 2000, are all of 19's paid, or all of 18's?
I think, well, in order, order for them to say they're not current, they had to be three years past.
Right.
They haven't been paid since 2018, since I don't...
Well, the fire occurred in March, so...
Right.
Are the first half of 17 paid? Because 18, I don't have, I could pull it up if I, but I don't.
Hang on, I just had that.
So in fact, what you're saying is...
Because we could be two years into it. Next year could be the third.
Yeah. Maybe we're not looking at three more years. We may be two years into that period, presuming it goes to tax sale at year three. Okay. That makes me feel a little better, you know, just a little.
If, if an heir is determined, and that's the person with whom you negotiate, does this property ever get listed as a debt that that person owes?
No.
So they're merely just acting on behalf of, but not truly with what most people would consider as the owner?
Mike's Craig. It appears that the 2018 and 2019 taxes are unpaid.
Okay. 18 and 19 are unpaid, so we'd go, so basically in 2021, they could, that we'd be at three years.
The, if I may, along the line of what the mayor has mentioned, certainly if the heirship could be identified, and if there, the city had interest in expediting that process and attempting to negotiate some sort of acquisition of the property, you could certainly, by agreement, either designate one or more of the heirs to initiate that dissent proceeding, and upon the completion of that dissent proceeding, those owners would be positioned to transfer title to the city on a negotiated basis. It would not be a basis for them being responsible for the cost associated with the demolition. But if you said, how do we acquire the property as quickly as possible? It would be identifying the heirs, arranging somehow for that dissent proceeding to occur, and on a contractual basis, acquiring title from that group of heirs.
You know, not having heard from Mr. Rogers, if, if indeed that would be his intention, what is in action would make me think right now, but certainly wanna move in that direction.
Mayor Hoppick here. Without doing our homework, we don't know if he's even the heir that has the ability to, to, to deal with that, so.
Good point.
So, so I think we need to...
If I may suggest, I think proceeding with this, at least to expedite the process...
We need to proceed with this, and that's another, yeah.
As, as Mr. Peltier said, the, with a 60-day, with a 30-days to commence, we'll know whether that obligation's been met in 30 days. We can proceed with bidding for demolition, and simultaneously, we can try to pursue other options. Given it's, it is a narrow lot, but given its location, it may have some redevelopment value, or may have some value on the market.
And I guess either, either way, it's still a dangerous structure.
Yeah. And I guess, Mayor, yeah, Mayor Hoppick, I am gonna ask, I'm gonna follow up with Commissioner Frans, is why are we two years into this, when it was such a badly damaged property?
Well, like I talked about in the beginning, or, or ahead on the, on the blue sheet anyway, we, we try to work with the property owners to, to comply themselves, tear it down, take, take ownership, make repairs, or whatever they were going to do. We've been in contact with, with both of those siblings on and off throughout this whole time, trying to get them to do this, and they, they ended up finally declining, because at initial, they didn't know what they wanted to do with it, and so we were kinda waiting and waiting. So we, you know, boarded it up, at least made it safe to where, you know, people wouldn't climb in and crawl in and things like that. But it would, just kinda gotten to a point where we had to draw the line and say, you know, are you gonna do something or not? They finally said no, so we brought it to you, to you for consideration.
From an inspection perspective, if a fire just happened on January 1st, is there a minimum number of days that, I mean, to where it's just totally demolished by the fire? That house is, it's dangerous from that point forward. You know, declaring it dangerous doesn't mean that you can't still negotiate with the family to see if they're gonna fix it. Is there a minimum number of time that you routinely, like, prior, before you take the step of making that declaration?
Well, there's, there's different, there's the dangerous structures proceeding that we go through now, and there's also, we had the ability to declare something immediate and immediate danger to the public, where it's gonna, it's gonna fall, or you only have to do something right now. And there's something that, you know, we could have it taken down, you know, the next day, if it's gonna be something that's gonna fall and actually hurt somebody right away. This one definitely has structural damage on the inside, but we didn't feel that it was in danger of collapsing on anybody right of way. So that's the reason why we were, we were kind of taking our time a little bit to help, hopefully, the, the property owner or family of the property owner would, you know, do the right thing and, and help, help us along with this, to, you know, save expense and time and things like that. So, but as far as an actual timeline, you know, we go out, generally the next day, the fire department calls us, we're out there right away to assess the structures and things like that. But I don't know if I answered your question or not.
It did, because certainly in the case of the, case of imminent...
Eminent danger and...
You, you do have the authority to act immediately.
Yes.
Thank you.
I would add, they, they were able to placard it and require it to be boarded up. So, and from an access, an attractive nuisance standpoint, we're able to secure the property and then kind of pursue this process.
Mayor Hoppick, and I don't wanna be critical, but I've driven by this for a couple of years and wondered why this hadn't been dealt with. And there's some nice, there's like Wood Streets right there, and has some really nice kept homes. If I'd have lived in this neighborhood, I would not be happy, because this is an eyesore to that neighborhood, and, and to me, there should have been something dealt with this. We should have done this probably close to a year ago. And I'm just, that's just my thoughts. I'm just, so, anyway.
Commissioner Ryan here. If the neighbors had complained, would that have advanced or sped up where we are here today?
A lot of times, stuff that we do is complaint-driven, so, you know, there's, there's on one hand, you try and work with people, and you try and help them along, and, and do things like that. But if there's building complaints and, you know, mounting concerns about, you know, dilapidated structures in the, in the neighborhood and things like that, it, it does, sometimes will tend to get us to move things faster. That's a possibility, yes. We haven't had any complaints or anything about this. It's just something we've been trying to hold their hand along and try and, you know, help along with it, without, you know, throwing a, a big, you know, demolition bill on someone's lap who hopefully wanted to do, do it themselves. But, you know, this is one of them things where it, it took longer than, than maybe it probably should have to get here, but, you know, we're, we, we try to work with people as much as possible, and sometimes it, it tends to drag out a little bit when we do that, so.
Okay. Any more comments? If not, we will close the public hearing, and I will bring it back to the commission. Do I have a motion from anyone?
I was just sitting here listening. All right, Mayor Hoppick, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
It may have been raised for a while. Commissioner Hoppick?
I just, I just unmuted myself so that I could vote. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Mayor Hoppick. I move approval of Resolution Number 20-7815, finding that the structure at 320 East Bond is unsafe or dangerous, directing that the structure be repaired or removed, and the premises made safe and secure. Fixing a time, and I'd like to change this to 30 days. I don't... I don't know what, trying to figure out how many days each month has, or whatever, Monday or Friday. Anyone have a calendar?
If I might, the actual resolution does say shall be commenced by May 5th, and all work done no later than June 5th.
All right. Commenced by May 5th and worked done by June 5th, within which the repair or removal shall be completed, and authorizing staff to proceed with the demolition or repair if the owners fail to comply.
Second.
Commissioner Ryan, second.
Oh. Mayor Hoppick, we have a motion and a second to approve resolution number 20-7815. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes five to zero. Thank you, Sean. Okay, that moves us into 7.2 under administration.
I think Ms. Pack will be joining us again, and we can walk through those items.
Item 7.2, discussion regarding current City of Salina projects and contracts in response to the COVID-19 pandemic.
Welcome back. Yes. And before we get started, I'm going to ask either legal counsel or Mike, are we going to go through this in whole, and then we will recess into executive session? Is that how you had this?
Correct, that's what we were thinking. It just really depends on your discussion and the questions that you might have, whether we need executive session at all. But we certainly, everything that we provided in the packet is public information. We can go through that and then see where the conversation takes us.
Okay. Thank you.
Debbie Pack, Director of Revenue. So last week, we brought forward some pretty general information about all the projects that we had going on right at the moment. And you asked us to come back with further information so that we can make some decisions on what the recommendations would be as far as moving forward with those projects. So today, we're, some of the considerations we took into account were the cost savings in 2020 and the future years for any debt service, any contractual obligations we might have already gotten ourselves into. The, we also have to think about the local economic impact of these projects. Some projects that are started, we need to consider shutting those down, how we ratherize those projects, and how we keep those project, those sites safe. We need to have those security. Some of the costs that you don't think about is we, we would have to pay some of those contractors to demobilize, which means take their people out, wrap things up, take, you know, get it to a point where they can stop. And then when we started the project again, we would have to re-mobilize them. So those are additional costs that we wouldn't have had on those projects had we not postponed them or stopped them at any point. Another big issue that came up in our discussion is if, if you have a project that you've already started, and you postpone it or put it on hold, then who's responsible for the warranty? So, because if I come back and I'm, maybe the same contractor's not available, then you have one person that has part of the warranty of the building and part, and who owns that? So that was a big concern for a lot of our projects. And then also, if you have materials that have been purchased, you have to have a place to store those. We'd have to pay for them in most of our contracts. Where would we store those, and would they even be usable when we got to the point where we could kind of proceed with these projects? So those were some of the considerations that we took as we looked forward into some of these projects. So we'll go through these projects one by one. I'd ask Mr. Schreg, do you want to get direction on each project as we go through each project? Would that be easier probably? Because then we have to come back through them.
We can try that. If there's questions, we may have to defer and take that into executive session.
Okay. So the first project we presented was the police training facility. As we know, this is a $5.9 million project. Our cost to date was about 3.7. I did get an email today that we have another about $900,000 invoice. So we, the materials have been significantly purchased or on order.
And Mayor, is the $900,000 just, is that materials that have been ordered, or?
No, it would be the work they've done since they built us last time. So it's probably the March.
Billing, okay.
Billing. The potential savings on this is if we had, if we stopped at this point, we would still have to pay for what we've gotten. So the savings is only about $190,000 in annual reduced revenue debt service payments. The funding for this, as budgeted, has been out of the sales tax fund. And on a 15-year note or bond, that would be about $560,000 a year. So if you have any questions on this particular project, or if you want to make some recommendation, staff's recommending that we continue with this project.
Mike's Craig, one clarification. The, the added invoice that we just recently received will reduce that annual savings on debt.
Correct.
I don't know the exact amount, but.
Usually about $70,000 per million dollars borrowed roughly on 20 years. So that'd be probably a little bit more than that.
Instead of 2.3 left to be spent, now it's down to 1.3, so. That quite cuts that in half. And then the unknown in all that is, and the contract, Chief Nelson had a conversation with the contractor, and they've ordered materials, targets, and things for the range, that everything's being produced and on its way. So in addition to the one main that Debbie mentioned, there'll be, if we were to cancel, we'd still be responsible for all that ordered product that's being manufactured and delivered. So that was the reason that we recommended continuing the project, just because savings seem pretty.
I would open it up to any commissioners with questions?
Commissioner, oh, questions?
Or comment?
Just remark, Commissioner Ryan here, that I agree with the staff suggesting we continue with the project.
Commissioner David, I would agree, plus, you know, not knowing the future, we may actually need a finished building that may need to be repurposed or used as a staging ground for something. So it's, I see this as actually building a potentially needed asset in addition to its original purpose.
Commissioner Franz, any comments or?
I'm, I'm okay with continuing. I don't think it makes any sense to stop it.
Commissioner Hodges, can you hear?
Commissioner Hodges is unmuted on my end.
Commissioner Hodges?
Oh, I'm sorry, I muted myself online.
Okay.
I was pretty interested in this project.
Okay, okay.
And I think the only action that would need to be taken on your part is if we're going to change course. So if we're continuing as contracted, I don't think any additional actions.
Okay, then we'll move to the next one.
So the next project we have is the golf course irrigation. This is much farther along, about 95%. The last time we talked to them, I think they had $70,000 left. That wasn't spent to date. This potential savings would be about $88,000 on reduced debt service. The funding of this is property tax at about $127,000 payment per year.
Commissioner Ryan here, continue.
Commissioner Davis, I'd agree.
Agree.
Commissioner Hodges?
I agree, let's get it done.
Okay. Thank you.
The next project is the water plant project. This is a $32 million project. Cost to date is estimated at $16 million. That number could be up now that we have another month under our belt. It's about 50% complete, about 90% of the materials have been purchased. The estimated cost to cancel with demobilization and all of the costs to the contractor were between $7.5 and $9.5 million. The avoided cost then would only be about $5.5 million. The potential savings could be around $370,000 in annual reduced debt service. And this was being funded at an estimated annual payment of $2,010,000 out of, with a KDHE loan out of the Water Utility Fund, and the recommendation from staff is to continue this project.
Mike's Craig here, Martha Tasker, Utilities Director's on the line. I'd like to unmute her and give her an opportunity to, to add some additional background or detail. I think Ms. Pack mentioned the estimated cost to cancel, which is substantial. But Ms. Tasker can speak to kind of the orders that are in place and the things that are currently being fabricated. So I'm going to unmute Martha. Martha, are you there?
Martha?
I'm, I'm, can I, uh?
Yes. Go ahead.
Okay. I spent quite a bit of time talking with the contractor and Mark Peterson, our engineer on site overseeing the project. And in general, we've completed the review of nearly all of the shop drawings, which once the shop drawings are reviewed and approved, then they order the equipment. We have some controls left to, to review and approve. So we have a lot of equipment that's on order and coming in from the process standpoint. For example, the chemical silos would be a million dollar item, they're in fabrication. And along with many of the other pieces of equipment, which, and these items are basically coming along with the intent of being ready to kind of fight back the plan, have everything in place, fighting into the year, assuming that we don't have delivery issues or something like that with the COVID-19 issues. So the project is moving pretty well. The one thing that, kind of the reason we ended up with the range is that we didn't get numbers or look at all of the equipment that the subcontractors could, could have on order. We didn't talk to them at this point in time. And we also have buildings that are without roofs, or some without doors and windows. And to be able to walk away and leave the project secure for weather ties to where the equipment would be usable again, would require probably about two months of work. Might take us to about the first of June to get to that point, so there'd be a couple more months of work in there too, included in that, kind of in that number. So in general, it was just, kind of where we're, it's where we're at in the project, that we have a lot of materials on order coming in. My, for me, the big concern, along with how to protect the equipment, was warranty. There's no guarantee that when we get ready to start back up, that potentially we would get the same contractor and subcontractors back working on our project, because they may have moved on to other projects depending upon time and schedule. And I'm not sure how things would be warranted, or even if we started up in three months, how they'd be warranted, or six months, because of one thing, the warranty starts either when they come to get delivered to the site or when you start them up. Usually those are pretty close together, but the farther apart they get, the more difficult it is to talk to the supplier and using the startup data as a warranty. So warranty and protecting all of the investment of all the pieces that we bought and stored on site was a big concern for me. Did that help, I'm sure anything, Mike, or?
Yeah, that was what I was thinking, especially the warranty.
Martha, Mayor Hoppick here. The, the million dollar silo, is that, is that included in the materials purchased or in the estimated cost to cancel? I guess I was still a little confused on the cost to cancel.
Estimated cost to cancel would be all of these materials that we have on order that are being manufactured at this time.
So that would be part of the 90?
Then they place the order.
Okay.
And so those materials are being manufactured and are, they're alone in their process of manufacturing. So just as an example, I gave you chemical silos to kind of give you a feel for some of the pieces of equipment are kind of.
Yeah, this is Mike's Craig. I think that the 90% number is intended to convey that practically all the equipment has been purchased. It's just being manufactured, to be delivered, to be installed.
Okay.
Yeah, and this thing that estimated cost cancel, those dollars is, but I worked with the contractors and tried to go through the, the main pieces and develop that.
Ms. Pack, you might speak to, this is out of the water fund, part of the water rate study.
Debbie Pack, yes, it is. And it has been part of the study since, I've been here since 2017. It's been estimated with a, a payment to come out of that fund. And it's been included in any of the rates that we've increased in that, in the water rate study as we've gone along.
So I'm not going to say that COVID-19 isn't going to impact the water fund or consumption, or, but that hasn't been our focus of where we think the significant economic impact is expected.
Any questions or comments from the commissioners?
Commissioner Dave, I'd say considering the completion on the materials purchased and the source of the money to, to service the debt, I would complete it at this point.
Commissioner Hodges has her digital hand up. Commissioner Hodges, you're unmuted.
Great, thank you very much. I guess it's more of a comment than a question, but since 2012, we've lost about 2% of our population. And I know that's not reflected in our water accounts, but I'm really concerned about the burden that we are putting our utility fund under, especially when earlier in this meeting, we were looking at extending the tolling agreement for the Shilling Air Force remediation. And that's another expense that we don't talk about a lot, and we've kind of been able to put it on the back burner. But depending on how that all works out, that could be another significant cost. And I just see this, this particular project as the biggest one that we have, and understanding that we would need to find places to store materials and it would affect warranties. I think at some point, it would serve us well to do our best to disregard our own commitment bias and say, okay, this is one thing that we cannot do. So I'm, I'm sure I'm probably in the minority of this, but I would like to halt construction on the water plant. Thank you.
Okay. Hey, Martha, are you still on?
Yes, I am, I'm saying.
Yeah. Yeah, you're still on.
Unintentionally, but it worked out.
Mayor.
Sorry about that.
Mayor Hoppick here. Could you give us a little background as to, kind of when we came up with the water plant, the, the number of years that you were dealing with, the drought, and the, and the, some of the issues that we had as a community? Could you address that a little bit in light of, of Commissioner Hodges' concerns?
We'd probably go back to 2006. Unfortunately, the line receives about 60% of its water supply from the Smoky Hill River, and 40% from the downtown well field, or as much as 50/50, but river water is much more prospecting to true. And in '06, we really experienced a historic drought event. The, for all practical purposes, the river went dry. And we do have an emergency water supply drought emergency plan. And it has trigger points, and it sets the requirements for a watch, a warning, or an emergency. So in, in July of 2006, the trigger points were met to go into a water emergency. And along with that, the division of water resources restricted or applied the water rights to where the irrigators could not use those during this course of time for about a month. So the river was then kind of dire stretches for some time there. And then it continued on with the water warning truly to about the end of 2007. And as a result of that, the thought must have been forward with some type of a water supply study to determine what we could do to, you know, kind of firm up our water supply by looking at the river, the well downtown, the wells out south of the airbase, the old airbase. Really look for sustainable alternatives to get us through to the year 2060. And back came some downtown well field improvements that we've done, and this south water treatment plant. We've also purchased some assurance distance water from Canopus Lake. And the volume of that is, it's there in drought conditions. And so it's helpful, but it depends upon how long the drought is in and the volume of water. There has to be water in the lake for us to be able to access that. And when I look back at Canopus Lake. I look back at Canopus Lake, um, kind of to give you an idea, in '83, '84, there was 480 days when the lake was below its conservation level, the significance to the conservation level. Um, anytime it's above that, it'd be not where the water flows up freely. When it's below that, the amount of water that flows out of there is controlled and isn't necessarily always enough to meet the demands at that time. Uh, but with the access system for water, we were able to work with all of the partners involved and hold the water in the lake and only release what's necessary down the stream. So a lot of good came out of looking back at the reservoir and its level. So in '83, '84, 480 days. In, uh, '88, '89, it was 452 days the lake was low. And, uh, kind of the record was that 2006 time period where, um, and from 2005 to 2007, there were 640, 624 days when it was low, um, that conservation pool. So very limited water leaving the lake. And then, uh, again in 2012, 2013, 400 days. And then 2017 and 2018 were gearing up to be, uh, a very dry year. It was kind of strange. It wasn't a long duration, but there was several months of very bad, and there was rain and the lake dropped down. So not so much as a long period, but a, a drought that was really bothering us in 2018. And, uh, in 2012, I'll step back a step, and we had the timeframe there of, uh, definitely, um, after '06, when things were really severe, we actually set up and, and worked as if we were in the access district and kind of practiced that process of working with all of the regulatory agencies, the city and the irrigators, to control how much water we each needed. So, and then again in 2018, so a moderation here. We've had water issues in '06, '12, and in '18. We were set up to have the calls, but our, it was unfortunate that Hays got lots of rain and, uh, still put some water in the lake and took some of the pressure off of us. And if you look at Hays, they've been trying to get the water supply in place since 1990 and still working. And, uh, have been collecting, uh, some tax since that time to be able to afford it. So, um, it's really been kind of an extended, the drought came a lot more often, I guess is the point I'm trying to make. And I hope that answers your question, Mayor.
Yes, thank you.
Maybe it was longer than you wanted, but I guess.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the commissioners?
Commissioner Ryan here. Yeah, I, um, I, I think this is an important project to keep on track, um, both because of the redundancy in the water supply and the, um, uh, and at $32 million, if we sidetrack it, it may look like a much bigger number when we come back to it. So $30, $32 million may be on the cheat, considering the warranty issues and, um, the loan rates that we have, the financing costs. I think we should continue the project.
Commissioner Franz?
You know, I was here in 2006, 2007, and I remember those days, uh, very well, coming into work with a question of whether the towers had refilled during the night or not. Um, we absolutely need this project. Uh, there's no question in my mind. It's more than simply a redundant capacity. We need that water flow so we can ensure fire protection in the community for both residences and businesses. It's an economic development issue. It's a service issue for our citizens, and, and it's, it's something that we absolutely need to proceed with.
Thank you. And you were, continue?
Continue.
Okay. I think that's a majority, so I think we'll continue on with that project then.
This next project is related to that project. This is the water line that connects that plant to the water system. Uh, this is a $690,000 project. It has not been started yet. However, this is intended to be, be paid for out of the Water Utility Fund from cash. It was budgeted in 2020 in the system enhancements portion of the sub-CIP. Obviously, if we didn't, uh, proceed with this project, we would have a $690,000 savings. However, if Martha's plant gets built and she can't get water to it, she can't test it. So we, there's a, there's some, you know, it's like having a car with no tires. We, you know, it's a connectivity issue at that point. So we are recommending that we continue with that, this portion of that project.
Commissioner, it's hard to argue with, against logic like that.
I think it should continue.
Okay.
Continue.
Commissioner Hodges?
Sorry. Commissioner Hodges, you're unmuted.
It sounds like I'm going down like the Titanic, just kind of trying to keep with the water analogy. So maybe it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Is there any public comment? I forgot to ask you on the last one, Mike?
We don't, we have a newspaper reporter, staff, and a city commissioner. That's what we're on.
Okay. Okay. Okay, we'll move on to page seven.
Okay. The next project is the preliminary design for river renewal. This is significantly complete. Um, we have a little bit of work done left on, I think the drawings are already completed. I think Martha said there's about $100,000 left of, uh, an invoice that needs to come in. Uh, the funding for this is, um, out of the debts, or would be out of the sales tax fund as part of the river renewal project. It's approximately $276,000 a year. The potential savings of that little bit of money that's left is about $13,000 in the reduced debt. We would recommend, staff recommends that we continue the current contractual commitment that we have with the contractor on this design work.
Commissioner David, I agree. And when we get the rest of the money, we can...
We'll be ready to go.
At least we'll have the drawings, right?
Commissioner Ryan, continue.
Continue. Commissioner Hodges?
I continue.
Okay. Thank you.
Markley Magnolia Sewer. This is the project that is replacing the septic lines, um, in that Markley Magnolia area. It's a $1.4 million project. We've spent about $760,000 to date. All of the materials have been purchased. Uh, the funding for this is a KDHA loan out of the Water Utility Fund at approximately $98,000 a year. Uh, the potential savings is about $44,000 in reduced annual debt. Um, as I mentioned, and Martha wanted me to make sure that you knew that this is a public health issue, um, in regards to replacing those septic tanks. Uh, staff is recommending that we continue and complete this project.
Mike Scragg here. I just unmuted Martha. And Martha, can you elaborate on the materials purchased not yet paid for at all? Because it looks like we've purchased 100% of them, so I think our potential savings may be overstated.
That's what I was...
I'm not sure, and I noticed the material purchased 100%. I'm not sure that's the right answer. I think we got a good share of them, but not quite 100%. We do have a pump station in this, in the ground, so that's, um, about a little over $100,000 piece of the puzzle. And, um, there's a lot of piping and material out there, so, um, I think it's reasonably accurate for the materials that are on site. We have, uh, the pipe belay, um, south of Ballou View, which is the area with the septic tanks, and then along the, um, west side of Ballou View, between there and the golf course, and some work down at, uh, the pump station on the south side of Markley Magnolia, and the work that's left is done. So there's a reasonable amount of piping left to be laid. Probably makes up the biggest difference there.
Thank you. How long have we been working on this project?
Well, I made the comment that I think I started when I came here. And so...
You may not want to say that.
I wouldn't have to retire. I would not have to.
Commissioner Franz, but you didn't answer the question. How long have you been working on this?
Ever since I've been here, almost 16 years.
Okay.
I was more worried about the reference to retirement.
Right. Okay. Comments from commissioners?
I, I see, is Commissioner David, no reason in not completing this project at this point that...
Commissioner Ryan, continue.
Commissioner Franz, we need to get it done.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yeah, let's get it done. Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on next. Thank you.
The next, um, project is the water main project that's currently underway. This is two contracts with two different, um, vendors. The first contract is about $2 million. The second one is about $1.8 million. Uh, cost to date, you can see, is roughly 1.8, 1.4, um, per, for each contract. We anticipate that 100% of the materials have been purchased. It's about 83% complete. The funding for this project is a KDH E loan out of the water fund at about $267,000 a year, and the potential savings is about $45,000 in reduced annual debt. And staff would recommend we complete this project. I would remind you, this is part of the, um, water main replacements that we started several years ago, that we intended to do $20 million worth of project. Um, this is the, the last project that's continued. We have one more project that's, that's in, in the works that we'll talk about a little bit later, um, from the loan part of this, these projects. Martha, do you have anything else to add?
Let me unmute her. You're unmuted?
Uh, no, I don't. It's, uh, we do have areas left within the community that have been actually, actually awaiting their new water mains so that they can have a better quality of water. They, they've been very, very, very patient. So I would appreciate being able to finish that for those citizens and, uh, give them that better quality of water they deserve.
We'll start at the other end. Commissioner Franz?
Uh, yeah, we need to continue. Uh, Ms. Pack, you'd, you'd said that we had initially authorized $20 million. Does this mean that we're almost to the 20 million?
I think we, uh, Martha can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we have one more loan for $4 million in that package, and then we can, then we continue the project, paying cash. That was the intent.
That's correct. I mean, this gets just roughly 16 million, and we have, the next one we're going to talk about, that's KDH E, so that'll wrap that up, then we're moving to $2 million in cash, is our intent.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, we need to continue.
Okay.
Commissioner Ryan? Continue.
I'd agree.
Commissioner Hodges?
I agree.
Okay, thank you.
The next section of projects that we get to are contracts that we have awarded. Um, some of these we're recommending that we do, that we use our federal fund exchange money for. We talked about that a little bit earlier. Um, these projects were originally budgeted out of either sales tax or gas tax. Uh, the first one is pavement sealing. It's a $270,000 project. We've had approximately $190,000 cost to date. Um, potential savings could be seven, about $79,000. That could be redirected to, redirected to other federal fund exchange eligible projects. Um, staff is recommending that we continue this project.
Mike Scragg here. Jim Coatch, Public Works Director is on the line, and you may have noticed the, this work is ongoing. As I drive around town, you see new streets that are crack sealed. And with the materials purchased, the crack sealing materials purchased, Jim and I have had a little bit of a conversation. We're not sure how that would work in terms of hanging on to the materials but not completing the project. But I want to give him an opportunity to, uh, speak to you. Jim, you're unmuted. Jim, are you there?
Yes. Uh, yeah, yeah, we've talked about this when the contractor's already purchased the materials, and it's the kind of thing, it's not stuff we could readily store or use. Um, and if you provide this to a contractor in the future, you get into that, uh, whether or not they're going to warranty the work.
And when we say material, we're talking petroleum products and crack?
Right, right. This is the actual hot asphalt that they put in the pot that, uh, and we've talked about this, that this is the first layer of the cake. Um, the crack sealing is something we try to do on our asphalt and concrete streets before we, we overlay them or microsurches them or put U-bath on. So this does help keep the water out of the base, which is the main thing that helps preserve our roads. Um, we are, have done this for a couple of years now, so this is the first treatment we've done on some of our old concrete streets, you know, in decades. So it's, it's a very real wild project, and it's almost done. And there's not much benefit in, in not finishing it.
Mayor Hoppick here. And again, we're talking about the, the federal fund exchange. Those are, that's that 800,000 we looked at when we were earlier, that we have, we have those dollars to spend.
We have those dollars, and they must be spent in 2020.
In 2020?
Yes.
On, on street projects?
On street maintenance and repairs, yes.
Okay.
And we do have a table and some discussion later in this presentation of different options.
I was wondering if we should go through all three at the same time?
It might not hurt. I mean, if you, if you want to indicate an initial thought, but then we are going to have, kind of balance the federal fund exchange dollars with the projects we want to...
I'm fine with proceeding.
Continue.
I'd agree.
Commissioner Hodges? Continue, okay. Thank you.
The next project that we're looking at, possibly federal fund exchange funding, is the Mulberry Storm Sewer Project. It's a $479,000 project that has not been started yet. Uh, well, I shouldn't say that. It's been bid, it's been awarded. Um, the cost to cancel is about $68,000, per the information we got from the contractor. Uh, the cost avoided would be about $392,000. Um, staff is recommending that we do continue this project, and we do use federal fund exchange dollars for it. I'm sure, uh, Mr. Coatch could give us a, a better explanation of the project and its necessity.
And you're unmuted, Jim.
Oh, yeah, yeah. This is a project that, uh, we've been planning for quite a while. Um, it took us quite a while to get the plans done, and then there was a, a long waiting period to actually get the, the railroad approvals to put the pipe underneath the railroad spur there on Core Street. Um, it typically, it's going to drain the, the Mulberry Street, uh, from Fifth Street onto the old riverbed channel, and particularly, uh, Fifth and Mulberry is a, is a problem intersection that, that does drain, but it drains extremely slowly. So if we get, um, a floodwater for a short, short period of extremely hard rain, um, that intersection is usually six to eight inches deep in water for a couple hours.
Commissioner Dave, I don't see much point in putting a nice, pretty $20 million hotel and having it under eight inches of water. So just, and it's going to be the gateway back into the park. And just, it's, the street's kind of torn up now. Let's just get it done.
Commissioner Franz, concur. I doubt that we could get away with calling that the pool for the hotel.
Just to be clear, Jim, uh, you might describe the street work portion of it and the storm sewer work in the right way. So everyone has a good understanding of what the finished product for Mulberry Street will look like.
Right. Um, the, the, the main, um, portion of the project is storm sewer. There will be new inlets placed at the, at the corner, corners along Fifth Streets and Mulberry, and then it, it will travel between the sidewalk and curb, uh, eastward on the south side of Mulberry. And a portion of that sidewalk and curb is going to get damaged during the construction of the, the storm sewer. The storm sewer, um, gets deeper as you go east. So it'll go under into railroad track, and then it'll, it'll daylight into the old river channel. But, um, there'll be minimal stuff as we're, as we're moving east, and then we're replacing the sidewalk, any damaged portions of the street, and the curb that, uh, inflects with the, the storm sewer construction. So it, it'll look not like it does now, but there'll be a, a much larger pipe installed on what's there now.
Thank you. Continue the project, yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Actually, this is one of the projects that I can see as, um, putting on hold until things settle down a little bit. Um, but I think that, again, I don't think that's something that, uh, the rest, my fellow commissioners, uh, agree with. So, um, but I, that's, this is one of the ones that I would prefer to see that we put on hold. Thank you.
And my question was, Mayor Hoppick, is by using these funds from the federal fund exchange and doing the next one, we've basically allocated all those funds for 2020.
That's correct.
Were there any other projects that would have taken precedence over one of these?
We actually asked Public Works staff, Mr. Coatch in particular, what his priorities were, and he might address that, but these are the... And he might address that, but these are the projects that he indicated.
The Santa Fe Street segment was the other one that was in the initial conversation, and it was in our ongoing conversations. And Jim actually came up with the idea of, because of the fiscal year for the state and federal fund exchange dollars, we might be able to complete Santa Fe yet this year, but use 2021 federal fund exchange dollars for it. But I'll let Jim speak to kind of the priority of all this.
And Mayor Hoppick, when do we get notification of what those, if those federal exchange funds, federal fund exchange dollars would be? And when do we actually receive those?
Jim, can you speak to that?
Yeah, we get a letter that updates upon the amount. And it is the federally funded exchange, and if they did reduce it to 75% for a while, but it's back up to 90%. And if we actually used federal funds on a project, it would cost us more, more than 10% in administrative costs just to comply. So this is, gives us a lot more flexibility to use the federal funds on our local, local projects. They do have to be projects. They can't just be for routine maintenance type things, but they have to be for projects in that federal fiscal year. And the federal fiscal year runs from October 1st to September 30th. Typically, a lot of our asphalt work gets done in the line after October 1st anyway. So we do have one other high priority street that would like to get done this summer because of the condition, and that is Santa Fe from Crawford to Mulberry. But we would be able to use next year's federal fund exchange for that. Now, it's typically a reimbursement, so we have to show them what we've spent on projects, and then they reimburse us up to that amount. So typically, we have a lot more projects than what they're going to reimburse us for, so it's not a problem. We had actually planned to come to you at the end of March with proposals, have spent this year's money. But as we had to make a tough decision, these were the ones that we considered the highest priority. And we can pass streets, and we can pass tunnels. It's really hard for us to do something temporarily to take care of a drainage. It's all or nothing.
Jim, Mayor Hoppick here. Do we know for sure that we will get the federal fund exchange dollars in 2021?
Well, there's, I guess, never a guarantee, but I'm not quite confident with the talk of federal stimulus and transportation infrastructure projects, as well as the state passing their new transportation program. It's going to make a lot more funds available to locals. That this would be, would be one program that continues, if not gets larger in the future.
And Mike Scragg, one of the conversations we've had and I've seen elsewhere is the possibility of additional stimulus for public works projects to, you know, bolster the economy. So part of the conversation that Jim and I had is some of these projects we're saying, we're recommending postponing. Maybe if we wait, we might have some stimulus money that we can backfill the funding of them with. But too soon to tell.
So on the Mulberry Street, I think I had three yeses up here, so, okay. Four, yeah, mine, four. You were four, yeah. Okay, we'll move forward.
The next project under this federal fund exchange funding is the minor concrete and manhole adjustments. It's a $175,000 project. The materials have been purchased or ordered, but the contractor did put them on hold. This is, again, another project that the potential savings is the full amount of the project if we wanted to redirect those. This is another one that staff is recommending that we do proceed with.
Out of federal fund exchange dollars.
Yes.
Jim, any comments?
Well, this was one that we had kind of a mixed bag of priorities. But one, it's the site contractor, and it could fully utilize this year's federal fund exchange. And then we also looked at it as kind of a, it's a backlog of work that we've avoided for the last three years. So it's kind of been on the list the longest as far as what needs to get fixed. So even though it's a lot of backstreets, it affects a lot of people in a lot of areas of the city. And I know some of them have been making calls to you. So we thought this would be most responsive to meeting their needs.
Mike Scragg, we did talk about going back and revisiting every manhole and seeing if any of them could be pulled out of the project. The next slide is kind of the table of federal fund exchange dollars and the balance. And we might be able to manage to, those other two projects and try to get everything to balance.
Because I saw, by reviewing that, it looks like we're over a little bit, depending on where we come in with our contingencies.
Right. So, you know, if you really wanted to be aggressive in cost savings, we could try to manage the manholes and see if we can identify any that didn't have to be adjusted and try to get that, that overrid.
Commissioner Davis, I have a feeling your staff would probably want to do something more productive than go out and look at manholes. I think I'd trust their original judgment on that.
Mike Scragg, I don't want to have to defend why one manhole got pulled out of the project, in all honesty, but if that's your direction, we'll do it.
Commissioner Franz, I would hate to be in that position too, of, you know, having a manhole that somebody hits every day, and that'd be the one that we've selected not to do, you know. So I think we need to proceed with the full project.
Commissioner Hodges?
Oops, sorry, I'll unmute her. Sorry, I was slow on the, the switch there. Try again, Commissioner.
Yes, I agree. We should proceed with the manhole cover adjustments. Thank you.
Commissioner Ryan?
Continue.
That makes it 5-0. We'll continue.
So that brings us to that table that we talked about, the, the kind of summary of the federal fund exchange recommendations. As we mentioned, we, for 2020, we have $897,238. If these, if all of these projects utilized the entire contingency, we would be short $27,000. If the base bids come in as their bid, we would have a balance of a little over $7,000. The next project that we are going to look at is the compressor for the SCBS. This was a, this was an item that was on the CIP with the purchase of the SCBS for the fire department. That's the self-contained breathing apparatus. This is the compressor that fills those tanks. It's a $38,000 purchase. It was originally budgeted to come out of debt. That was going to be paid by property tax. The current compressor, as Fire Chief Royce had indicated to me, is costing them about $10,000 a year to maintain. So we're recommending that this project continue as we have approved the, the purchase of the SCBSs already.
Commissioner Davis, is there a maintenance contract? Is this $10,000 a year for the current one unbudgeted repairs?
No, that is cost that they incur for actually fixing the, doing work on the current one.
That's per year, then?
Yes.
So like a maintenance contract, or just unbudgeted?
Yeah, it comes out of their operating budget.
It comes out of their operating budget, right.
Just to fund, need repairs.
Right.
All right. So we would actually save that as well, assuming this new one works for a while?
Correct.
Well, I don't want those guys and gals going in to do what they do without adequate equipment.
Commissioner Hodges?
I would like to proceed with purchasing the compressor.
Okay.
Commissioner Ryan, continue.
Commissioner Franz, continue.
Okay. That's, I agree. That's fine. We'll move on.
The next project that we wanted to look at was the Dean Evans Drainage Project. This contract has also been awarded. It's a $60,000 project. The materials have been purchased of about $41,000. This was originally budgeted to be paid out of cash from the sales tax fund. We did discover that we could, because this would qualify for payment out of the special parks fund. And that fund did have, as we looked at earlier, about a $300,000 budget, or a balance in there. And that fund can be used for the purchase, establishment, maintenance, or expansion of park or recreational services programs and facilities. So we felt like this project would, could be used out of those funds. So we would recommend that we continue this project using special parks funds instead of sales tax funds.
Commissioner Davis, assuming that, if not this year, next year, Baseball picks up, this would solve, what I'm gathering, is the single biggest complaint about Dean Evans.
Mike Scragg, I'm not prepared to say there won't be drainage problems, but this is our intention to try to, our intended solution to capture runoff on the runway and under the runway that we think is contributing to the moisture at home plate and at the backstop.
Because it's, and again, I don't expect it to be used this year, but I don't see a better time to do something like this other than when the fields can't be used anyway.
Mike Scragg, again, if we weren't 75% into having all the materials purchased, I think we, the staff's recommendation probably would have been to postpone. But given all the materials are purchased, the contract, and the notice to proceed's been given, and we entered into the contract, we felt like we needed to continue.
Commissioner Ryan, I agree that it should continue. And this, the completion of this allows Baseball Enterprises to begin work on the apron or the logus area they wanted to work on?
It does, and it also was intended to interface with the subsurface drainage for turf when we were pursuing the turf project. So from a timing standpoint, they were anxious that we get this work done so they could proceed with what they wanted to do. Now, having that being put on hold and all that being in question, we'll have to revisit that in 90 days.
Commissioner Franz, I appreciate the shift to the special parks fund, and I think we ought to proceed at this point.
Commissioner Hodges?
I agree with all of you, especially since we don't know when or if we're going to be able to continue with the Baseball Enterprises proposal as it exists now. I think we need to at least make sure that Dean Evans is remaining in a pliable condition. So I say proceed.
Okay, I agree. Thank you. Okay, next.
The next project is the Mill and Inlay from Santa Fe, on Santa Fe, from Crawford to Mulberry. This is actually a change order from a 2000, the remainder of the 2019 Mill and Inlay dollars. Staff had some funding left out of the 2019 Mill and Inlay, so they did a change order for that. They, however, did not have enough to complete this project in there. This is a $252,000 project. We spent about, on publication, we've spent the $300,000. The material's about 75% of the, of the contract value. The cost avoidance would be about $211,000, and this would be funded out of sales tax. We're recommending that we complete this after 9:30 of 2020. And hopefully, then, at that point, we would be able to use the 2021 federal fund exchange dollars.
This is Mike Scragg. Jim is unmuted on my end. I think we might have a cut and paste here. We've got cost to date and materials purchased that match the Dean Evans slide.
Oh, maybe.
Jim, are you able to verify the cost to date and materials purchased for the Santa Fe project?
Uh, yeah, I'm a little suspect.
Guess it's a good thing he's in his office.
A suspect.
And while he's doing that, this is a project I referred to earlier in that Jim spoke about, that if we completed it after September 30th, then it would be in the next federal fiscal year for federal funds exchange dollars.
Commissioner Franz, so it's the date of completion that matters? We could initiate it before then?
I said complete, but I guess it's probably initiation, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify. By the way, by the way, I paid attention to that street as I drove it the other day. And I, I find it interesting that the southbound lanes are in considerably worse condition than the northbound lanes. And I'm not sure what the reason for that is, but by the hospital where they've got that pullout parking is a chronic issue with potholes, and I don't know if water sits there or what. And I was going to suggest, if we can't do anything else, maybe we could do the, the southbound lanes only and defer the northbound lanes for a period of time. But if, coming out of FFE, I'm a little, little less prone to suggest that.
Commissioner Davis, that's a project I've wanted to get done, just because I fall in those craters frequently, but I have no problem moving it back. But if we jumped ahead to page 17, are the gas tax funds restricted in a way that they cannot be used for Santa Fe early, and then the Santa Fe project come out of the gas tax funds later in the year? And again, you're going to have downtown, and it'd be any people walking on the sidewalk, but there'd be a pretty hotel, a pretty hospital, and a beat-up road in between. It'd be nice to get all of that done so that, whenever we get visitors back to downtown, they don't have to dodge Santa Fe construction for a couple of months.
Yeah, that's a good question and a good point. I think our thinking, I think Jim's going to find that there isn't a lot of cost incurred on Santa Fe. While we do have materials purchased for the U-Bass project, which is probably why we prioritize them like we did, but we could certainly look at whether gas tax funding was an option.
Unless the U-Bass is going for a street that's in worse shape than Santa Fe.
Go ahead, Jim.
Looking back to the detailed information that we got from our asphalt contractors, and they did not give us the materials purchase price for the Mill and Inlay portion on Santa Fe. As you remember, they were, were adamant that we postpone it, if nothing else, and maybe get some stimulus dollars to complete that, that portion of the project. But they did give us a detailed estimate of the cost for the U-Bass and this year's 2020 Mill and Inlay project. So they, they said they had some money tied up in it as far as the oil and the aggregates that they purchased, and the cost estimated and do the work, and they were very anxious, actually want to start it a couple of weeks ago. But until we had all of this settled, we weren't able to give them the notice to proceed. So that is, it's one thing. We don't have an actual number from them on this project. But I did look at, on my other project list here, and as far as the, Commissioner Davis' question, we originally had the Mulberry Storm Sewer Project funded with gas tax. So I think there is an opportunity to maybe split the difference or do part of it this fiscal year or next fiscal year and utilize both of those funds. But we'd have to look into it further, determine what the schedule's going to be for Mulberry.
Well, I don't know if you're giving me a choice. I'd rather do Mulberry first and get it done. But just so that the hotel won't be inconvenienced. But I guess my brain wasn't keeping up with you. So was the net of what you said as far as being able to flip-flop the U-Bass with Santa Fe a yes or a no?
Well, we're proposing to do Mulberry out of the federal fund exchange.
Yep.
And it was $480,000. Our, our gas tax budget for the year is about $737,000, and we're placing a portion of that on hold. But there, there would be an opportunity to do the Santa Fe Mill and Inlay work with gas tax money, if that's the direction the commission wants.
Right, because I was thinking, the U-Bass is several streets. It's not just one single project, I'm assuming?
Yeah.
And it'd be easier to split up and depart. Obviously, Santa Fe, you either do the whole thing or you don't, I guess. But the U-Bass, you could split it up.
Yeah, U-Bass has multiple streets that are across the city. Whereas the Santa Fe change order is just from Crawford to Mulberry, right there, south of downtown.
So I understand where you're trying to go, and I think staff could see if we can come up with an option. We have a very motivated contractor to do U-Bass and, and some of the other projects, and they've got the materials purchased. But with a little bit of latitude, we could try, we could put our thinking caps on and see if we can kind of shift this around differently.
Commissioner Ryan here. I would agree with Commissioner Davis about getting that section completed for the benefit of the entryway to the downtown. I'd be comfortable, though, if, if they could just get it done as close after 9:30 as possible, if that was the other alternative.
We wouldn't really do the, we wouldn't do the Mill and Inlay on Santa Fe until we knew for sure we had the, the federal funds, correct?
Well, I think what we're saying is, maybe we can do Santa Fe with gas tax and then do one of those other projects. Oh, until we knew.
Yeah, we wouldn't spend that until we knew we were going to get it.
Correct.
But that's something we get every, well, have received every year.
Historically, we have, but Jim, what? Historically, we have. But Jim, what, what time of year do we typically get confirmation of federal funds exchange dollars?
Generally, notified about the first of the year. It's usually a little bit after the federal fiscal year starts.
Right.
We could approach them and find out if they have any information or what they can anticipate our share will be next year and when we would know that.
Mayor Hoppick, because I hate to start a project not knowing we're going to get those dollars. I'd rather go back and figure out how to use the gas, because, I mean, yeah, maybe the stimulus, you know, they're going to give extra dollars out. I could see it being the opposite with this $2 trillion, you know, stimulus package, and if they come out with another one, they may have to cut somewhere. So, I mean, I'd hate to do something betting on getting dollars that we don't actually know we're getting.
Commissioner Franz here. Jim, you'd said that you have, there's $737,000 in the gas tax, and by that, I mean, I take it you mean that is the amount that is uncommitted yet?
That amount that was budgeted and planned for projects this year.
I guess my question is, if we look at the status of that fund by way of cash position, is it possible to amend the budget to the point where you could free up enough to be able to do the Santa Fe from Crawford to Mulberry out of that fund and get them both done?
Debbie, do you know the balance?
I'm looking. I think we have that in the other spreadsheet. I believe that fund did have a fund balance at the end of the year. We intentionally budgeted that a little bit tighter last year, but I do believe it had a significant fund balance.
Yeah, and I'm just, from my, if memory serves me correctly, it typically has. We have not always drawn that down.
Right.
And recognizing that we may have some revenue loss in this, that year in this fund, I do think that the gas tax is not going to get as hit as hard as many of our other sources. And so, I'm thinking that might be a way to accelerate getting this section of Santa Fe done, rather than waiting until after next January to know how much federal funds exchange we're going to get.
Yeah, I did find that. We had an ending fund balance at the end of 2019 of $1.79 million in that fund.
So, I don't think that $252,000 is going to break the bank, and we could plan on a budget amendment this year to be able to give, provide the authority for getting that Santa Fe project done this year and not worry about messing with, you know, splitting the federal funds exchange or whatever. That might be an easier way if we're in concurrence that that's the way to proceed.
Commissioner Hodges, do you have any comments?
I'm sorry, I got to unmute her. There you go. You should be unmuted now.
Commissioner Hodges, have you-
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. No, I agree. I'd like to nail down the funding source, but yeah, let's proceed.
So, with respect to fund balances, one thought, I don't even want to say it's been a conversation yet, is we are going to the bond market with our bond issuance, and things look favorable. We found out today that our bond rating was affirmed. It was not downgraded. There was some conversation in our bond rating call about just a nationwide downgrade because of COVID-19. We'll know a little bit more when we go to the market, but all indications are bond issues are selling, and in fact, rates are improving a little bit. So, I say all that because in the back of my mind, I've been thinking, if our bond issuance is unsuccessful, we may be going back to who, to some creative financing from fund balances. But even so, you know, $250,000 isn't going to save the day in that scenario, anyway.
So, would we need to wait till next week to do a amendment to the budget to-
Yeah, we typically do them a year in, but I think we'll bring you a resolution that summarizes all the direction that we've kind of reached consensus on, just so we're on record. But if there's, if there's receptivity to that, if, we really didn't look at spending down fund balances, other than that park, special park fund. But if you're open to that, that would be a solution.
And I do agree, Santa Fe needs, needs something done to it. But I do like the idea of using the gas fund instead of trying to bet on dollars we don't know we're going to get for sure.
Especially given the balance that's there. I mean, it's-
That's a, that's a good point. Thank you for that, Rod.
And that action would actually put some dollars back into the sales tax capital fund, because the change order in 2019 was actually charged to the, to the sales tax capital fund. So, it will put a little bit of money back, about $200,000 back in there, I believe.
Maybe we'll start weighing all the trucks going south and the ones coming north. There's a difference somewhere.
Try to figure out what's, what the difference is.
Maybe on the ambulance, if that doesn't matter.
Yeah, so-
Mike?
Yes.
Go ahead, Jim.
Commissioner, I think these things are good, because I just had a text from Dan Stack, the city engineer, and he said we usually don't get notified on our federal fund exchange amount until February. So-
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
If you want to make sure we had it, we wouldn't know it necessarily October 1st.
So, so, I, do we have a consensus? And I'll ask Commissioner Hodges to weigh in to do the, the U-Bass and the Santa Fe from Crawford to Mulberry using the gas tax?
Yeah.
Okay, I have a yes from the phone.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So, that's five yeses. Okay. Thank you for that input. Good job, guys. And-
So, does that, you included the 2020 U-Bass in that discussion? We hadn't really talked about it.
Well, I guess.
We figured we'd make it easier.
Okay.
So, I think we-
I'm good with it if you're good with it. So, does that move us to the 2020 mill and inlay?
It does.
Yes.
Okay. So, 2020 mill and inlay is a $900,000 project coming from sales tax. Cost canceled from the contractor was around $81,000. Staff is recommending that we look at this in the future for future possible delay or cancellation.
And that recommendation came from me. This one is probably something that is maybe problematic and might merit executive session conversation if you really wish to pursue cancellation. Really looking for some direction from me on this one. You know, you look at the cost to cancel compared to the $900,000 project expense. That's our, well, that's our estimate at the moment. And then it kind of becomes a judgment call on your part of whether it's, you know, we just got done talking about our concerns and how aggressive we might want to be. Incurring that cancellation cost to save the, the further expenditure would be a pretty fiscally conservative approach.
And-
Do we want to put this one on?
Let's, yeah, and then let's go to the next one. I noticed it has something similar.
So, I think the next two may warrant some further discussion that would be better suited in executive session. This is a chip seal. It's a $225,000 project. It's got a cost, estimated cost to completion, cancel of $21,000. It was also budgeted out of gas tax. We would also like to further review that one with you.
Commissioner Franz here. I, I'm loathe to cancel these street projects, particularly if it costs us money to do it. And what I would like to see is, can we put that, put this decision on hold and ask the staff to get, come back to us with a, an updated status on the sales tax fund capital, so we can see where we are with all of the changes we've made, to see if it might be possible to proceed with, with these projects. I just, I, you know, I know that the cost of cancellation appears to be relatively modest, but I really would like to see these projects proceed, if we can do that in any way.
Mike's Craig, I just want to be clear, these are rough estimates of cost to cancel as well. So, it could vary. Jim, could you speak to kind of the timing from the contractor's perspective, and if we would have the opportunity to look at other budget numbers and, and bring this back to the city commission?
Yeah. They were, were very interested in getting started on the Santa Fe mill and inlay project, but weren't prepared to start on this year's mill and inlay project until later in the summer. And the manager of the book last fall term was adamant that they were willing to postpone this until later in the year in case other dollars became available in lieu of cancellation. But, but they would need to know relatively soon so that they could get the bulk of the materials purchased and delivered before the work was done. But I do think we have a window to wait on, on this project as well as the chip seal project, if that's what the commission likes to do.
Mike's Craig here. In light of that, I think that would give us time to pursue what postponement might look like, as well as the rest of the budget numbers that we've been talking about.
Jim, Mayor Hoppick here. Who do, who is the 2020 mill and inlay contract with? Is that with more than one company, and then the 2020 chip seal?
The 2020 mill and inlay project is with APAC-
Okay.
And a local company with local employees. You know, they're, they're wanting to keep their staff busy, which does ultimately help us by keeping the cities running. The 2020 chip seal project is with Circle C.
Okay, I knew.
Not from Salina, but it comes with a company that we're doing work with now.
Okay. Commissioner Hodges, do you have any input on this?
I just think I'm very interested in pursuing these cancellations. So, I look forward to whatever information staff can bring back to us. Would that be like next week?
Um, yes, we'll do our best.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Is consensus to, I think, to allow staff to pursue that a little further?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next project is automated sanitation trucks. This is a $1.53, $5 million project. We have not, there has not been any cost to date. When we reached out, this is a debt financing project out of the sanitation fund. We, when staff reached out to these contractors, they, they indicated that they have incurred some costs, but rather than canceling these, they're, they're willing to waive those expenses if we would just delay the contracts up to 15 months. They're willing to keep the prices the same. The truck trade-in value probably will change, because we will have used those trucks an additional year. There's also possibly some grants or low-interest loans from the stimulus bill. So, staff's recommendation for this one and the refuse cart project, which is the next one, are basically the same. We got the same response from both, both of those contractors, is to work with legal to find a way to extend those contracts and possibly start them a year later, if possible.
Mike's Craig, if I could add, what our recommendation is to work with legal counsel to negotiate some type of an extension. So, part of that conversation is going to need to be not just a deferral for a year, but if we elect somewhere in that intervening time not to go forward, some agreed-upon cost to get out. So, I was pleasantly surprised with their receptivity to postponing, given the size of the project and their need to contract with subcontractors. I figured we were going to hear they're already past the point of no return. So, I think we have an opportunity to, to kind of negotiate with them and bring you more detail.
So, in a couple, three weeks, whatever legal counsel can do, you'd bring this back to us and whether we, okay?
Correct. They can't hear my nod, my head nodding on the phone. Correct. And Jim, you are unmuted. If you have anything to add.
No, we were pleasantly surprised by both the truck manufacturing company and the state for carts, their commitment to provide, provide us service and to keep the contract in their books with the current cost for, for a year, in the case, at least a year in the case of the cart run up to 15 months for the trucks.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Greg Bingston, legal counsel. And, and my sense was that it would still be staff in the primary communication role, and we would just be assisting to the extent necessary to document the arrangement. It wouldn't be a lawyer-to-lawyer negotiation, is the way I understood it.
Correct. And we need them to help make sure we get it right.
Comments from the commission?
Commissioner Franz, I'm fine with that.
Commissioner Hodges?
I'm fine with that. I'm fine with that as well. Thank you.
Commissioner Davis, I agree. Mr. Ryan?
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. That's five to pursue a delay. So, thank you.
The next project that we're bringing forward is a project that's a county, it's a cooperative with the county for a road project for the mill and inlay for a portion of Centennial Road. We brought this to you back on March 9th to get a signed memorandum of understanding with Celine County, which you did approve. We estimated the cost at that time to be $70,000. The county has gone out for bids, and that cost looks like it's going to be closer to $76,000. I believe they're taking that to commission tomorrow, their, their commission. Staff's recommendation on this is to authorize the continuation of the project at the total city expense of $76,000 due to the failing road condition out there on Centennial.
Mike's Craig, I personally drove that road just to verify, and it, it is noticeably failing, or at least the, Mr. Coach pointed out, there's a section where the subgrade is failing, where we could really lose the road and need reconstruction, and then the majority of the road base is just showing its age. So, if, if you're inclined, in light of the fact that it's over budget and, and this county commission's looking to take action tomorrow, a motion just to be on the record to authorize that, that budget overage would be the appropriate thing if that's where you want to head with this.
I think in the interest of world peace, $6,000 is a small price to pay.
I would add, the, the road segment where this would, this would start at Waterwell and head north, and then it would connect to a recently improved section of Centennial. So, add some continuity to that roadway. Jim, do you have anything you want to add? Oops, I'm sorry.
I talked to Justin Mater.
Jim, I just realized you were muted. You're going to have to start over, sorry.
I'll start over. No, as you noted, Mike, it's in really poor condition. There's some sections that have failed. If something isn't done, there are probably more sections that may fail. I was in communications with Justin Mater, the Celine County engineer, and he was uncertain with the price that they received, whether or not they would award the entire project. But the way they did this, each road segment is did as a separate project, and he said it would be relatively easy to remove this if the city didn't want to pay their share of it. But he was hopeful to get the work done, because the road was in poor condition. And he would like to know which direction we're going, so he can present a committee tomorrow morning.
I'm not sure exactly how the, this is Commissioner Davis, how I would word this. I'd be willing to accept the suggestion.
Do you want to read the recommendation? It's pretty close.
Just read that. All right. In that case, I move we authorize continuation of the county cooperative road project on Centennial Road with the Celine County at a total city expense of $76,000.
Commissioner Ryan, I'll second.
Hey, Mike?
Yeah.
Yeah, now, 362, or 326, so, I don't want to get hung up on a couple dollars.
Seventy-six.
326 is the correct amount.
I'll amend that to $76,326.
Second Amendment.
Okay, we have a motion to authorize continu-
Can I?
Yes?
Commissioner Hodges, I unmuted you, thinking you might want to comment.
Hi there. Yeah, I think go ahead.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve the $76,326 for the Centennial Road mill and inlay project. All in favor?
Aye.
And I believe Mayor, or Commissioner Hodges already said follow.
Yeah.
So, okay, we'll move forward with that. Okay.
The next item that we have is the basketball floors at T-Pac. As you recall, we had those bid out. The bid came in at $97,990. We did contact the vendor. They are willing to hold this price for a future purchase if we wanted to do this later. They would provide us with a similar quality- They would provide us with a similar quality with all the listed accessories, warranty, and refinishing as we bid earlier. This was budgeted to come out of the T-PAC fund balance. Staff is recommending due to the unknown TGT future collections that we postpone this for future consideration.
Mike's Craig, you may recall that this was a used basketball court, a lightly-used basketball court for the NBA All-Star Game, so to say that they'll replace it, there'd have to be some conversation about what they have in their inventory when the time comes.
Right.
Commissioner Davis, what is the operational status of our current floor? I'd heard it was beyond being easily put together anymore?
There are not replacement parts. The technology has changed. It is difficult to put down and take back up, and it requires fabrication, custom fabrication, if we have problems of repair parts.
Because I would just throw, this again, might be something you want to replace and fix while the building's not being used. I don't know what rush of tournaments is going to be for that building after restrictions are relaxed, but, you know, maybe not in the next two or three months, but I want to keep it up near the top of the list. Sometimes the best time to, well, drive past the airport. I think every small jet Delta Airlines owns is parked here in Salina now. It's a great time to bring them in for maintenance because they're not needing them on their routes right now. I don't know if our current floor is in that bad a shape that we'd run the risk of planning a tournament and not being able to put a floor out there.
Yeah, Mayor Hoppick, I guess my question to T-PAC would be, is the floor we have currently usable for the upcoming season?
Yeah.
Because if we put it off, you're not going to get a floor in time to do that. But I'm okay with that, as long as the current floor is usable for another year.
We've limped by for a number of years. This is an example of a mildly tough decision that we felt like we needed to recommend postponing, just because of the overall financial picture.
Commissioner Ryan, how quick could we get a new floor? Do we have any sense of that? If we were doing this, I mean, they're out there to be had, or would it take six or eight months?
Debbie Pack, the email that we got from Susan Trafton said that they wouldn't start production until we made our first payment, and that full production is 60 days. Now, they have to have something available, but, because they have to refinish it and redo all that, but that process takes 60 days, according to her email.
Commissioner Franz, are we talking about another used court instead of this one?
Yes.
Okay. Would there even be one available at that point, is the next question? My question is, and I hope the staff doesn't try to do me in over this, but could we pay for this out of the special parks fund? It is a recreational facility. It should qualify if there's money there that we have accumulated to do that with.
Check.
I think that would be an appropriate use of the money.
Not to sidetrack the conversation, but as we started thinking more broadly about the special parks fund, my question was whether we could buy mowers with it.
I might have issues with that, but, you know, yeah. So I think that's a possibility for this item, instead of deferring it, since it is in such poor condition that maybe it would be better to proceed and just try to find a different pot to pay for it out of.
Commissioner Hodges, we're going to unmute you. Any comments?
Sorry. There you go. You're unmuted now.
You're unmuted now. Commissioner Hodges?
Commissioner Hodges, you there?
Yes, have you got me?
Yes, now we do.
Yeah, okay. I would prefer to defer this cost to a later date.
Did you hear Commissioner Franz's comments?
I did, and I'm just worried about, I think we're just going to need to hold on to whatever cash we can. And I'm getting a little bit, you know, worried about, you know, taking from this pot or taking from that pot, and I was just not familiar at this time.
And I guess my question is, is that floor usable for another year? I mean, not knowing exactly how bad a shape it's in, I'd like to...
If I can, I'd be happy to offer to get some more details and try to answer those questions and report back.
And then I guess also, you can do a little research on Commissioner Franz's comments.
I'm good with that, if we want to defer this one a week to try to assemble more information.
What I heard is, can we sort of, can we get by another year? What's the likelihood of another one being available, and then the 60-day turnaround time? Can we fund it out of special parks fund? And the thing that's crossing my mind is, how much of a revenue generator is it? How many events would we have to have to pay back the $100,000 that we would spend on it?
Because we, this is Mayor Hoppick, because I know, no longer do we use it for the, what is it, with the high school?
Invitational?
Yeah, the invitational. It's not used for South Central, so basically it's for a basketball. We no longer have the women's junior college tournament. So it's basically for the...
The semi-pro team?
We don't have that anymore, do we?
Yeah, and I think they've canceled. I don't know if they've rescheduled.
I don't know. Haven't heard anything on that recently.
But then it's the option of not even having the option to even offer it to anyone if you don't have a floor.
I have to admit, and I think staff is working on the assumption that we would be able to continue to limp along, but I'll verify.
Okay.
Don't let the parts fabricate or retire.
The next project that we have is the 2020 micro-surfacing project. This was a $600,000 budgeted project out of cash sales, or out of sales tax cash. For this particular project, the contractor did not return the required documents and the prescribed time, so this contract could be canceled. When we sign a contract and give them notice of award, they have a specific amount of time to return that with their bonds and insurance and that such. This particular contractor did not meet that deadline. Our recommendation would be to discontinue this project.
Comments from the commission?
Commissioner Franz, I'm okay with that.
I agree.
Commissioner Davis, I agree.
Commissioner Hodges?
I agree as well, thank you.
Okay, we'll just continue.
The next section of these projects are projects that we've, the bids have not yet been awarded. Some, they've been bid out, but we have not brought them to you for approval on the bids. First one is the backup generator for Fire Station 3. This, we wanted to note, is the backup for the 911 system. It's a $56,000 project. Half of that is being paid out of the 911 fund. So the budgeted amount in sales tax is a little over 28, the budget amount was $27,000. The bid came in a little over $28,000. We are recommended with proceeding with awarding and purchasing this to ensure that the 911 dispatch has continued, can continue.
So is there currently no generator there now? Or is this replacing a current generator?
I believe it's a replacement.
I believe it is, too.
Okay.
Commissioner Davis, can't run a Porsche on regular gas. You got to protect the center.
Commissioner Ryan, I think we should proceed.
Commissioner Franz, proceed.
Commissioner Hodges?
Please.
I agree, okay.
So we will be bringing that forward to you for approval of that contract. The next one is the Quint fire apparatus. This did go out for bid. It was budgeted at $850,000. The bids came in at about $925,000. This one was originally budgeted to be debt-financed at a property tax, at a cost of approximately $105,000 a year. Staff is recommending we do not award the bid and postpone the purchase of this apparatus.
Mike's Craig, I think with that bid overage, we would have been having a similar conversation if we came back to you. And we do try to stay on a replacement schedule, but we don't have a specified replacement schedule on Quint, and this is just a big-ticket item that we could buy ourselves a year to see where things shake out.
And fire department does not anticipate any problems during their job? I mean, you don't get the truck the next day anyway, but they feel comfortable operating with the year delay?
They have a certified mechanic that works on their equipment, and this hasn't been identified as failing and needing, you know, repeated repairs, but it's more of a scheduled replacement due to age and use, but...
Debbie Pack, I believe also that they mentioned that they had a backup to that. I'm trying to remember if that was this particular item. When we talked about it earlier, they have one that's in place, and then they have a backup that they hold, the most, the least old one that they have in, so they do have a backup at this point for the one that they're running now. And they just shift those through as they buy new ones.
Okay. I just realized that Jim had his digital hand raised. I'm sure it's not about the Quint, but I don't know how long his hand's been raised. Jim, I've unmuted you. Is there something that you wanted to say?
Yeah, this is Jim Coach, of course, we're in here. Back on the micro-surfacing project, I just wanted some additional clarification. Like, in our specifications, we require a good bond and then a fat story bond. And then if they don't, if they're not responsive or they're delaying us, we have the right to take their bond. Where we're essentially titling the contract, and it's not, they're not causing us any inconvenience, I'd definitely like to return the bonds to the contractor in this case.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Seemed reasonable.
And then, thank you, Jim. I see Chief Royce is on the line. I'll unmute him. Chief Royce, are you there?
Yes, Mike, can you hear me?
Yes.
Just some clarification and some points of reference on the Quint. The bid came in at $925,000, that we were going to bring to award. The next bid was a $1 million and $50,000, so it's going to be probably over a million the next time, and they are at about a 400-day build. So we're really talking almost two years out from physically acquiring whatever we purchased, just to put things into perspective.
Thank you. How's the serviceability of the current Quint that it would replace?
With our mechanics, no doubt my money can keep it running, but it is going on 21 years old, and it was built by American La France Company, who's no longer in business anymore. So every once in a while, it does have some trouble finding parts.
Commissioner Franz, chief, did I understand you correctly in saying they submitted a bid for $925,000 and then up that to $1,500,000?
No.
Second bid.
The second.
Second bid was $1,500,000.
Second bid was $1,500,000, okay. All right. I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I thought that they had been playing with the bid.
Mayor Hoppick, did I hear you correctly, this piece is 21 years old?
Yes.
What is the life expectancy?
We, what our normal procedure is to run them for 20 years. First front line, we're going to move to reserve status for five. And then actually, we physically dispose of the apparatus from the department at 25 years.
This is Debbie Pack. Is the 21-year-old apparatus the one that's in line?
To Debbie's point, we do have a Quint in reserve, which is hitting that 26-year mark, which would have been one we would have actually retired out of the department and then moved this one that we're going to replace into reserve status for five years.
Commissioner Davis, it takes over a year to build it, or to get it. So this is one of those things that when you need, you can't get it immediately. Of course, we'd always have the reserve trucks, so just a question of...
Of course, the reserve is 26 years old.
It's 26 years old, right.
Chief, how long are the bids good for?
We talked to this manufacturer, this particular one will honor this bid until June 30th of this year.
I will mention, too, this is Debbie Pack, we did do a publication on the debt financing of this, which requires us to allow citizens to challenge it. I can't remember the word off the top of my head.
Protest.
Protest, that's the word, sorry. It's been a long week. However, we did not intend to finance this until next year, because we knew we weren't going to have to pay for it until it was delivered next year, so...
Commissioner Franz, you know, I'm inclined to want to proceed with this one. I just, you know, once you let your equipment go down that road, you know, you have kind of a cascading effect sometimes, and I sure as heck don't want to be in a position of having a fire truck that won't start, or whatever. And I'm sure we do everything to prevent that, but, you know, it's just like in the vehicles and equipment, we're going to replace police vehicles because they just reach a point where, you know, it's not easy to defer them. And I know this is a lot of money, and it, to be honest, replacing equipment like this is kind of a burr under my saddle, but I think that when it's necessary, it's necessary.
Mayor Hoppick, if the bid's good till June 30th, would you be okay with us putting this off till the 1st of June to kind of see how, I'm just, we'll get an idea as to how deep this is maybe going to run, and we may make the same decision, but I don't know what we're losing by waiting 60 days or 45.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. You know, I'm just saying, my orientation is such that I'm not sure I really want to, you know, if I might ask a question of chief, is there any possibility that we could, for lack of a better word, value-engineer the specifications and maybe save a little money on it?
The possibility out there does exist if we do not go with the specifications that we wrote and possibly search for what's called a either stock model or a demo model, which a lot of the manufacturers will build about 10% of their fleet, and then these are the models they take to shows, and they are, just like a dealership, has a demo. And those are usually about at least a 25% to 30% discount. And they're, the advantage is they're readily available because you, it's delivered, it's already a truck has been built. A lot of them have, do have some mileage on them, because the manufacturers have taken them to various shows and tried to try to sell them. The only disadvantage is it's first comes first served, and you're, whatever's out there is out there. The biggest advantage is instant, you put this in immediately and comply with it. The biggest disadvantage is you didn't design it to make sure all your equipment fits and so forth, but most of them are pretty standard in that.
Commissioner Davis, I get, the downside of that is, you pay for it when you get it as well. So we'd have to have the money, but, you know, some parts of infrastructure, you know, we take good care of our water, our trash, and a good operating fire truck, I think, is what we'd expect. And I guess if you look at it, if we were just to lease it for $50,000 a year, we wouldn't think it was that much, just a 20-year lease on a truck.
Mike's Craig here. If we are going to value-engineer it, which is a possibility, but we need to be careful how we go about that in terms of the low bidder and second-low bidder and so. Earlier, when I said that with it coming in over budget like it did, we might be having conversations about how to proceed, that's kind of what I was thinking, is, in normal times, I think we would take a hard look at the specs, what caused the bid to come in over budget, and see what our options were.
Commissioner Hodges, any comments?
She is unmuted.
Commissioner Hodges?
Commissioner Hodges, you there?
I'm here, I'm here. I'd like to look at some other options, whether that looks like a stock model or whatever, but this is, it's a pretty big investment, and while I don't want to get behind on equipment, I'd like to see if there are other options out there.
You know, and the two reasons, the items come in over budget... You know, and the two reasons the items come in over budget, one is that the vendor wants to charge more, the other is our estimate was just too low of what a truck actually cost. You know, so the offer may actually have been reasonable for what we were asking for. But I think Commissioner Franz and Chief Royce came up with, you know, good ideas to look at, and since we don't have to rush to a decision for the next month, two months, almost, we have time to explore the options. Although if we, if a very nice demo just happened to be available, we then write a check out of which fund for that truck.
We would have to write it out of one of our other funds, our sales tax fund or our capital project fund, and then reimburse ourselves when we finance it.
Commissioner Franz has commented, but we do have to be careful about the timeframe between the time we write the check and we reimbursement, because there are rules about using bond proceeds to reimburse previous expenditures. That we'd have to be very careful about, so.
And we need to get through the protest period.
And we need to get through the protest period. But, you know, that runs until when?
I believe it's May 6th, so that would give us an opportunity to wait till this bid is good, and we would know whether that protest period...
Sure, so that gives us time to go through this process, and we could still proceed at that point. Okay, thank you.
So what's our direction? We got mixed.
Commissioner Ryan, I, yeah, I think we should take our time and get all the options on the table.
Bring it back?
Bring it back and make our decision.
First meeting in June?
If we've got that latitude.
Or towards the end of May to get us past the protest period.
Yeah, towards the end of May, after the protest period runs would, you know, be ideal. We could probably do it a little bit before that to just give us a little more time. If we decide to go with a stock model, you know, that would give the department some time to kind of look at the market and see, find something that would be most suitable.
I think May runs funny with Memorial Day, so we might want to be looking at the third Monday.
Correct. Fourth Monday is Memorial Day.
Yep. So if we could, we start looking for those fifth Mondays and holidays early in the year. I just remember May was very strangely constructed for the way that month usually runs. Okay, so for the third Monday?
Okay. Move on to the next one.
This bid is for minor concrete for 2020. It was budgeted at $40,000 out of sales tax, cash sales tax. We're, staff's recommending not to award this bid and to postpone this purchase.
Just curious, what was being concreted?
It's individual locations that need repair, but Jim, I've unmuted you. Do you know the minor concrete repair locations?
Yes, this is Jim Coawatch, Director of Public Works. Yeah, we talked about this one, Mike, and this is the second layer to the case. Initially, we tried to do the crack sealing and get all the cracked joints sealed up. Particularly, we're doing some neighborhood streets that are old concrete streets. Some of those, we planned to microsurface or U-BASS for the first time because this is really small. Occasionally, along the previous roads, there are either utility patches or old concrete panels that are broken. We'd like to repair or replace before we overlay it. And that's what the bulk of this project was, was to patch up the concrete streets that are along the route where we're the overlay with ultra-thin bonded asphalt or microsurfacing. And I don't know the exact proportion, but there, if we elect to do the U-BASS or ultra-thin bonded asphalt, there are some streets that need patched before we cover them up. So that's what the purpose of this project was.
Commissioner Davis, so this would directly affect your ability to do parts of other projects, then?
Yes. The purpose of this project is to patch up the old concrete streets before we overlay them with some sort of material. Some of them are undoubtedly on the U-BASS streets, and some are on the microsurfacing streets. And I can't give you the proportions, but I know at least some of them need to be done before we overlay those U-BASS.
Right, because it would seem then if those other projects were approved, we wouldn't have much choice but to do this first. Otherwise, you have a bigger street repair in a couple of years.
Well, I think it's fairly clear that we should proceed with those sections that the U-BASS depends on, because we said we're going to proceed with that project. And let's just get a breakdown of that, and, you know, $40,000 is probably not going to break us one way or the other.
Proceed as needed?
As needed. Let's see if we can get the amount reduced, and, I mean, that'd be my take. It's not like a...
I like that.
You know.
Makes sense.
Commissioner Hodges?
Hello?
Commissioner Hodges?
I think we should go ahead as well.
Okay.
The next project is the chip seal on the landfill road. It's a $150,000 project. It was budgeted to be paid out of solid waste fund balance. Staff is recommending that we proceed with awarding this bid. Jim can probably add to the specific need for this particular project.
Jim, you're unmuted.
All right, this is Jim Coawatch, Director of Public Works. As you guys are aware, we did cell construction last year, and as part of that cell construction, we did some roadway repairs and some deep passing on the haul route from the main office out to the working face on the landfill. The roadway is kind of a quilt of different patches and operations that we've done over the years. A chip seal is a good way to heal up the pavement surface to keep water out of the base. And although it doesn't add a lot of structural stability to the roadway, it does, it's a good preventative maintenance, and if you routinely do it, eventually it will ultimately give you more strength. So with as much truck traffic that's out there, we think this is a possible effective approach to maintaining the roadway out of the landfill.
This, Mayor Hopp, what's our solid waste fund balance look like?
I believe it's 1.7 million. That's just off the top of my head, so I wouldn't see if I had that in our...
And what else do we use that fund for?
Originally, we were going to use that fund for, that fund balance also to buy the refuse carts.
Right.
And we had indicated that in that discussion, but we're postponing that. That fund is used for just the support of the landfill.
Cell construction.
Cell construction debt.
And we have a cell we're doing. Have we already paid for that?
No, it's in the bond issue that we're issuing this next week.
And then we'll pay for that bond out of this. So based on where we're at now and what we have coming out, will this fund continue to grow to be able to pay for those carts like we wanted to?
I believe so, because typically Jim Torch budgets the debt financing part of that into his operating budget annually. So what we were to anticipate to use the reserve balance for is not part of that equation. If that makes sense. That fund balance at the end of 2019 was $4.5 million.
Thank you for comments.
Commissioner Franz, I'd be in favor of proceeding.
Commissioner Ryan, proceed.
Commissioner Davis, I agree.
Commissioner Hodges?
Proceed.
The next project is the wastewater plant owner representative services contract. This is a $980,000 project. We do have, we have a bid for this, and we would be wanting to bring this to commission for award. This is going to be debt financed as part of the wastewater. It's the design work of the waste, it's an owner's representative, basically, contract for that project. It'd be funded out of KDHE loan out of the water utility fund. And if you remember, this project is a direct result of a KDHE schedule of compliance that we've been put on. It's a five-year compliance schedule. At this time, we do not know if that schedule is going to be adjusted in any way as a result of COVID-19. We have not gotten that indication, but we would need to proceed with this in order to stay on the current timeline.
And Mike's Craig here. Martha is on the line. I've had a conversation with her about the timing, and she's been in contact with KDHE, so I'm going to unmute her and ask her to update us on what she knows. Martha?
Martha Kasper, Director of Utilities. I did talk with KDHE and told them that we had, we were looking at a 90-day kind of pause to allow us to work, move forward with the project. Part of our first step would be bringing in contractors and engineers to take a look at the treatment plant and then respond to a request for qualification. So not the right thing to be doing at this point in time. So the 90 days seemed like a reasonable timeframe, and in talking with KDHE, their opinion was they really don't know what's going to happen or how schedules are going to change, but they acknowledge that something will have to happen, and that there's many communities with the same issue and situation. So I think it would be appropriate to step back, wait about 90 days, and see how the dust settles with COVID-19.
Martha, this is Debbie Pack. Are those bids good for that long?
It's really not a bid. It's an engineering contract, Debbie.
Okay.
And so we have not entered into that contract yet, Commissioner Franz, by the way.
Martha Kasper, Director of Utilities. No, we have not. I had worked through the agreement with them and got the fee to where I thought it was reasonable in comparison with what we're doing out at the South Water Plant. That's not actually what we need and was ready to, and then the situation changed with COVID-19 and just kind of pulled it off the schedule, knowing it just wasn't the right time to put the project out and start calling people into our community.
Everyone okay with delaying that for 90 days?
Yes. Commissioner Davis.
Commissioner Hodges?
Here we go.
Yes, yes, I'm fine with waiting 90 days.
Okay, thank you.
The next list of items are, these are sub-CIP items that were budgeted under system enhancements from the water wastewater fund. The original budget items are listed in that column, and then the revised budget request is in the middle column. Effectively, Martha has agreed that she can postpone the first item. The EPA supplemental item is the Jerry Ivy Park project, which was originally scheduled to be $60,000, but the penalty is $45,000. She's recommending that we just go ahead and pay that fine and not do that project. The Lime Lagoon project cost is coming in a little bit under at $80,000. And then the other projects that she is recommending that we postpone are the Markley Magnolia shilling water tower painting, the sanitary sewer line maintenance, and the, replace the two screw-type pumps with submersible pumps. Her original budget was $1.3 million. It was actually $2 million, but I took the $690,000 project that we looked at earlier out of this list. So of these items, her original budget, approved budget was $1.3 million. With the revised budget, that would bring it down to $516,000. So at this time, we would request that we could proceed with the revised budget items.
Any questions or comments from the commission for Martha?
One question. Commissioner Davis, is, I'm assuming you bet the urgency of the sewer line maintenance projects, is that, will we be inconveniencing any area of town because of that?
Martha Kasper, Director of Utilities. No, we won't have any issues with that. It's just a yearly project that we do to kind of keep things moving along and meet our overall goals and schedules long-term. So one year without that will not be an issue for us.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Ryan, remind me about the project for Jerry Ivy. It seems to me, couldn't we get some good out of doing something of a $60,000 project rather than just paying the penalty and...
Martha Kasper, Director of Utilities. This project, our, the description of our project, we have, we're draining the pond and removing the phosphorus and nitrogen from the sediment and then making some improvements to it with some floating wetlands and other aspects that would hopefully remove nitrogen and phosphorus, but we're very concerned about draining the pond to get your step one. And unless we get the pond cleaned out, we really won't gain a lot of good with our project unless we remove the sediment and such. And the timeframe to get that done and make decisions on the walls and different things seem to be a hangup for us, getting, meeting the EPA schedule, which is to have some of our work done towards the middle of this year.
So the $60,000 is so linked to all the rest that it's just not worth expending it? I mean, I'm thinking if you can make that pond any better for any length of time, that's great for the people that like that pond, whether we get to the bigger picture of repairing the entire pond.
Sorry, I couldn't hear you there for a second. Sorry.
That's okay.
Martha Kasper, the issue is we have to show success with our project and follow it for a year after the completion of the work to show that we, the work that we did was successful, and I don't think we'll be successful without draining and cleaning the pond and getting fresh water in there.
Okay, thank you.
If that helps.
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges, any comments?
Slowing the draw here.
Thank you. No, I think I'm good with everything, especially, you know, putting off Jerry Ivy so we can afford a definitive solution, which who knows when that'll be, but let's go ahead and pay the fine, and I'm fine with the rest of it. Thank you.
Okay. I agree.
Commissioner Franz, I'm good.
Okay. We'll go with the recommendation. Thank you.
This project is what we're calling the Price Property Project. This is a flood damaged access road repair. The estimated cost is between $25,000 and $30,000. We budgeted $30,000 for this one. It is budgeted to be paid out of gas tax. Staff is recommending that we proceed with this project because we do have some liability for that, that road repair that's been damaged due to flood.
This is Mike's Craig. It seems like we touched on this, reported it before, but this relates to a bypass channel project that took an Oxbow and straightened it out. And so because of the flood damage, it's about 188-acre field that a farmer doesn't have access to or has limited access to. They've been pretty patient, so this repair puts the culvert back and gets them access back in its original condition. Jim, Coawatch is on the line and unmuted if he has anything to add.
Jim, you there?
At least I think he is. Jim, are you there?
Did we have an agreement this?
Yes.
This is Mayor Hopp. Do we have an agreement with Price to repair this? Was that kind of part of the deal?
Yes, it dates back quite a ways, 1960s, is it, Jim?
Yeah, it goes back to the original channel change and diversion channel for Smoky Hill River that was done in town. They actually straightened some Oxbows just on the downstream end of downtown in an effort to try to reduce the backwater and flooding that would encroak back towards the city. So it goes clear back to the original flood diversion channel along Iron Street and then a couple of sections downstream. So it goes clear back from that point in time. It's an access road between two fields, and it was flood damage that occurred two summers ago, but it's taken us a while to, one, we had to wait till the water received so we could inspect the problem, and then it took a while to find the pipe. It's in poor condition, it's submerged. We could have planned a... poor condition. It's submerged. We could have planned a project, and we had to go through and get the permits necessary to work in the Smoky Hill River Channel, which takes some time. So there's been quite a bit of effort and expense in trying to generate a solution. And we're hoping to get the work done this past winter when we were in the drought. And we didn't get the necessary permits in time. We're prepared to complete the work now. We'd like to get it done before the property owners lose another year of productivity for those associated fields.
Mayor Hoppe here. Do we have some kind of agreement that we'll do this once and we're not liable down the road again?
As far as the restriction, we're responsible for the maintenance of that access road. That is something we could approach the property owners with, but I don't know what kind of leverage we have. You'd have to talk to Greg about that.
So this is in perpetuity that we have this requirement?
At the moment. I suppose you could try to buy your way out of that.
That's $1,000 a year.
Just, I was just asking, because I mean, if it washes out again, then we're back doing this, I guess.
Commissioner Franz, I think this project was done in the very late 1950s or very early 1960s, so it's been 60 years. And I don't know if we've done previous maintenance on it or not.
$500 a year, okay.
You know.
Just asking.
I know, it's.
Like future liabilities if I can get, if I get rid of it.
Occasionally, we'll make a statement that, you know, we need to consider our successors 40 or 50 years in the future. And this is one of the times we're hoisted on the petard of what our predecessors have done. So, which probably made lots of sense at the time.
Hoisted on the what?
Clearly, I feel we ought to proceed and get this gentleman his functionality back.
I would think.
Commissioner Ryan, proceed.
Agreed.
Commissioner Hodges?
Okay.
Okay, that makes it five of us. I agree.
This is the Oakdale Bridge Painting Project. It was budgeted for $100,000 out of cash from the gas tax fund. Staff's recommending we postpone this project.
I'm good with that. We can redirect these funds to Santa Fe, so.
Okay. Commissioner Hodges?
I like both suggestions. Thank you.
Commissioner Hodges?
I'm fine with postponing the Oakdale Bridge painting. Thank you.
Commissioner Ryan?
Postpone.
Postpone. That makes five of us. Okay.
The pavement marking project. Pavement marking project is a $100,000 budgeted project at a gas tax paid from cash. Staff's recommending postponing that project also.
Commissioner Franz, I would like to continue with this project. I don't know about anybody else, but my eyes are to the point when I drive down the streets in town and there's a little bit of rain or something and it's at night, the pavement markings are pretty valuable in terms of traffic safety, in my view.
I could not say it any better.
Mayor Hoppe, is this pavement marking for roads that are being newly paved, or is this remarking old road markings?
Jim, you're unmuted. Go ahead.
Yeah, this is Jim Co-Watch, Public Works Director. Generally, the projects, the paving projects that we have include the pavement markings. This is for the other areas in the street. It includes the center lines traffic, the turn arrows, in some cases, the bicycle markings, the crosswalks. The work we're working, it's packaged up into just an annual project. We try to get as much done as we can.
Mayor Hoppe, if it saves us any money, can we do away with the bicycle markings?
Go ahead, finish.
I know that's supposed to tell bicycle riders where to go, but they go where they want to go, and I'm one of them. I'm not.
Commissioner Davis, the problem is there are a lot of motorists who don't know where they're not supposed to be. And, you know, once this becomes part of our culture, everyone will know where they're supposed to go. But we have a lot of drivers who are still learning. We have a lot of bicycles.
You're talking about the bicycle lane, along the curb.
Yep.
Yes, I agree with that, but I'm talking about just the bicycles.
Called charos, where you have a logo.
Charos or whatever they put in the middle of the road.
I think those are even more important because some motors have to understand that just because they have 400 horses doesn't mean that they can run the bike, backer off the street. I think we actually prevent a fair number of injuries with those.
I just, they're not everywhere, so it just, I'm just, that's just my opinion.
This is Jim Co-Watch, Public Works Director. There are competing needs for pavement markings, and I'm sure we could spend the $400,000 without doing bicycle markings this time.
Commissioner Hodges, any comments?
If we are, if we are going to proceed with the markings, I would also agree that we eliminate the bicycle lane markings and try to stretch our dollars as far as they can for the motorists. But if the staff recommendation is postpone the project, I'm also fine with postponing the project.
This, Commissioner Davis, you know, we have some folks who may find it more budget-friendly to ride their bike to the store for the next three months than spend money on gasoline. We're preaching connectivity. We're, you know, everything that we've been moving towards the last several years has been making this a walker-friendly, bike-friendly, you know, connected community. And some, a lot of our bike lane markings right now are nearly invisible. And for drivers who haven't gotten used to the idea they have to share with the, with people on bicycles, I think they're important. I would say certainly, you know, those that are barely visible need to be replaced because we have elevated the bicycle to an equal partner on the street.
Commissioner Ryan, I think we should go ahead and do the pavement marking and include the bicycle markings. It's all, to me, part of public education about the use of the bicycles. We've got a lot of people on both sides to continue to understand what those are for and there's any reason to cut that out of the marking.
And we have, you know, a lot of kids who are not in school right now. You know, for their 30 minutes of exercise, they're gonna get out on the bike, some of them.
My preference would be that for PD to stop people that aren't observing the proper use of bike lanes on, both on the street and the sidewalk, and give them a little instruction about the way they should be.
If we were Congress, we could write that into this.
Commissioner Franz?
I'm in favor of proceeding with the project as originally planned, including whatever markings they were gonna put in, including bike lanes, including crosswalks. I mean, if we're not gonna do bike lanes, let's not do crosswalks.
Yeah.
Because, you know, I mean, I, and I don't mean that, I'm, maybe that sounded a little edgy. I apologize. But I think we ought to proceed with the project as planned, and it's a traffic safety thing in my head.
Commissioner, or Mayor Hoppe, and I agree with the bike lanes. I'm just, the, what do you call it?
The charos is what you're talking about, yes.
The only thing I can see that's not, but that's my own, so. Okay. And Commissioner Hodges, you're okay with all moving forward?
Oops, I'm sorry.
I mean, if that's sufficient for the rest of the commission, then that's fine.
Okay, I think that was the majority. Okay.
The next project is the North Ninth Street Bridge Project. It's a $2.4 million project. We've currently spent the design portion of that, which was about $95,000. Our cost avoidance on this would be $2.3 million. The funding for this was intended to be for debt financed out of property tax. The potential savings could be about $155,000 a year in annual debt service. Staff's recommendation is to postpone this project.
Mike's Craig, I do want to give Jim Co-Watch, Public Works Director, an opportunity to explain the project and the necessity for the project so you are fully informed. Jim, you are unmuted.
This is Jim Co-Watch, Public Works Director. This is the northbound bridge on Ninth Street, just south of I-70, where we have the decorative lighting in the median. The southbound bridge was done several years ago, and the northbound was in better condition, so it remains. It's time to replace the northbound bridge. It's not in any imminent danger, but it is one that we do keep an eye on. Our bridge inspector looks at it every year, and he's comfortable, and we are comfortable that postponing it a year will not cause us any harm. This is one that, in addition to the property tax or sales tax, could be eligible for future federal funds or even stimulus. Stimulus is attractive because we do have the plans ready, and a lot of those stimulus dollars have to be spent in the year that they're made available. So even if we had to use the federal funds sometime, this project's ready for that.
Commissioner Davis, Carl, when this project was first presented, I remember being told that this bridge had been downgraded as far as weight limits and whatever else goes into the grading. Is it still, can it carry the same traffic? Is it rated for the same traffic as the southbound side?
I am not quite sure. I know that visiting with our bridge inspector, Ken Johnson, that he's comfortable with the project being postponed for a year. It was my recollection, and I don't have it with me, is the bridge is postponed for legal loads. But if any kind of oversized rounding and stuff, they'd have to use the other bridge.
Okay, that may well have been it. All right, thank you.
Commissioner Franz, that was a question I was gonna ask you. And the design is such that we can put it on the shelf and use it in six months or a year with minimal changes? That's a question.
He said that's correct.
Okay.
He said that's correct.
Talking over.
Commissioner Hodges, any comments?
I'm fine with going ahead and postponing the project. I think that's the right thing to do.
Commissioner Ryan?
Postpone.
Postpone here too. Okay.
The next project is the Water Main Project that I alluded to earlier. This is the final of those debt-financed sections of the Water Main Project. It's $4.2 million. The plans are currently at KDHG for approval. The loan has been approved. This would be paid out of the Water Utility Fund, but payments would not begin until 2023. Staff is recommending that we postpone this project.
Martha, this is Mike. I just unmuted you.
Yes, Martha Tasker, Director of Utilities. The plans have been into KDHG for about, a little over a month and a half, and still haven't paid it through the review process. And the plans would be good for one year after they've been reviewed, so that review would hold good for an additional year. And so we could postpone it out until the end of the year, first part of next year, to make it work. And we still have the other two projects that you spoke of earlier that are still over construction. So postponing for a few months would work just fine on this project. Questions?
How many is a few?
Well, in my mind, until the end of the year. Maybe that's more than a few. But the six months, eight months, we might want to get it out of the house and be ready to start construction in the spring. So to be able to do something at the end of the year.
Right, because I think eight or nine months gives us time to, you know, for the time to make a difference in our decision. Two or three months probably wouldn't be any different from today.
Mike's Craig, I don't know if stimulus dollars would be available for something like this, but it'd give us time to figure that out.
Definitely would be looking out on the eight months, somewhere in that range, six, eight months, to see where we stand and make a decision where we want to go. Looking at rates are pretty good right now. I'm waiting on them to send us back our final documents to square away the low-interest loan. But many of the KDHG staff are either not working or working from home, still not back to full staff. So things are a little slow there.
Commissioner Hodges has indicated she'd like to speak. Commissioner Hodges, you're unmuted.
Thank you very much. I think my questions have been answered. In terms of postponing, I just wanted to know the timeline. So that's at least through the end of this year, through 2020, correct?
Correct.
Is that what I heard?
That's what I heard. Yep.
Yeah, that's what we're thinking.
Yes, that would be reasonable. We'll have a feel for where COVID-19 is and the other projects should be wrapped out by then. Should work just fine. Great, thank you.
Okay. Postpone?
Postpone.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes, Commissioner Davis?
Yes, Commissioner Ryan.
Okay. We'll postpone that till December of this year. We'll re.
The next project is the wastewater plant construction. This is a $28 million project, estimated to be about a $2 million a year debt finance out of the Water Utility Fund. This is a project that is a direct result of the KDHG Schedule of Compliance that we spoke about earlier. At this time, as we mentioned earlier, we do not know if that schedule will be affected. Our recommendation is that we proceed in conformance with the KDHG Schedule of Compliance, which is to be determined once that's either changed or not changed.
Martha Tasker, Director of Utilities. I would see that this would, you know, fall under the same 90-day kind of postponement we talked about earlier for the owner's rep services. By that time, we should have a good feeling of where KDHG stands and what they think is acceptable, we hope. We do have, really, the end game is to have the project in service completed and operated for a year by the end of 2024. So if we're short, we're off three or four months, I believe we can catch that up during the course of the project. But if this delay is, you know, till the end of the year or some schedule like that, it'd be hard to make it up. I would expect the rest of the schedule to adjust. But KDHG is not willing to venture a guess on any of this till we see when things settle out and we can make some informed decisions.
Okay. Everyone okay? Kind of goes along with what we've already done on the?
Yep.
Postpone? Commissioner Hodges agree?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Okay.
And the last project on our list, our budgeted item, was the Pay Plan Study, which is estimated to cost around $50,000. That was indicated to be budgeted to be paid out of sales tax, cash. Staff is recommending to postpone this project. It's time.
Mr. Franz, I'm okay with that.
Commissioner Davis, I'd agree.
Commissioner Ryan, okay?
Commissioner Hodges?
I agree.
I agree also. Okay.
And then going back, did we actually need an executive session for those two items?
No, I don't believe so.
Or did we just thought we didn't?
I think we ended up with some more homework, so I don't think we need an executive session.
Okay.
Just as clarification for anyone listening at home, as you indicated your preferences, for the most part, as I stated at the outset, if anything is gonna require a change of course, we'll bring that back. So you've given us a good, clear direction on all of these. We'll go back and look at them. And things that aren't changing our course, no additional action will be needed. We'll bring you a resolution or some ratifying action on the rest.
Okay, that leads us to 7.3.
Yeah, and if I, Mike's Craig, I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of you. Get out of your way.
Okay.
Item 7.3, Resolution Number 20-7813, amending the 2020 to 2024 Capital Improvement Program and giving the city manager the authority to reduce contractual expenditures as available.
Okay.
Thank you. Debbie Pack, Director of Finance. On Monday, December 9, the City Commission approved Resolution 197768, which adopted the 2020 to 2024 Capital Improvement Program. It provided for the anticipation, anticipated schedule of capital improvement projects and capital outlay for the next five years. It also included the 2020 sub-CIP spending. On Monday, March 30, staff presented to City Commission with a list of possible projects and capital. and capital spending items that staff felt could be delayed until the financial impact of COVID-19 pandemic becomes clear. There were additional questions that you asked us to follow up with, and we've identified those in the staff report. Those were the crematorium repairs of $37,194. Staff continues to analyze this from an operating cost perspective, historical uses, I think Mr. Scragg could probably give some more detail on this item than I probably have provided in the staff report. Do you want to do that now?
Go ahead, I'll double back.
And then the Station 3 bathroom plumbing, an amount of $10,000. You had asked us to do a little bit of clarification on that. We spoke to the building maintenance supervisor, who explained that this project was initiated by a copper piping that developed pinholes, and it's a pipe that they've determined since then has, is notorious for getting these little pinholes. At this time, there's no apparent leaks and there's no apparent damage from that. This project was scaled down from a full bathroom remodel to just replacing this copper pipe. Staff recommends that we remove this project from the approved 2020 CIP project list, or SubCIP list. I also provided you, I won't go through this entire list, a list of all of the items that we had discussed in our conversation previously, of those items that we would anticipate, that we would recommend that we remove from the budgeted items on the 2020 CIP. We'd also identified some savings in budgeted part-time and contractual services. Staff is recommending that the City Commission authorize the city manager to reduce spending in the contractual services at this time. The amendment to this SubCIP would create savings in the funds, as noted in the table, for the capital of the water fund, it would be about $2.4 million. For the solid waste fund, $72,000, and for the sales tax fund, about $933,000. Staff has identified the following options for City Commission: approve Resolution 20-7813, amending the 2020 through 2024 CIP program, and approve, and giving the city manager authority to reduce spending in contractual services expenditures previously budgeted in 2020; approve the resolution with amendments as you deem appropriate; postpone the consideration of the resolution to a future date or time; or vote to deny the resolution at this time. And this would allow staff to continue bidding and bringing contracts forward to you as they bring them in. Staff recommends option number one.
Mike Scragg, I'll speak to the crematorium a little bit. Chris Cotton, Parks Director, has been working hard on this, and it's been very helpful. Our crematorium services have varied widely over a number of years in terms of our needs and then the services that we provide in the community, and so we expect, the crematorium is in need of repair, just for our use alone. We've never really had a fee in place that was intended to recoup the services we might provide to vets or others in the community. We have had a fee for an individual cremation of a personal pet, but other than that, our fees don't really contemplate our costs. So we're working on coming up with a fee structure to propose to you, authorizing the crematorium repair, and then simultaneously proposing a fee structure to go with it. So we're not recommending that we remove it from the budgeted expenditures, rather that we adopt a fee at the same time. So nothing, if that's the course that you wish to take, then nothing's required this evening, and we'll bring back a separate action item as relates to the crematorium. And I guess I should clarify, that is, a crematorium at the animal shelter for cremation of strays and animals that Animal Services picks up, and we are a no-kill shelter, so it's those that are not able to be adopted or pass away, and then we're considering how we might offer services to vets and others in the community.
Questions for staff? Commissioner Franz, just as a point of clarification, we're removing quite a number of things from our vehicles and equipment list, and, you know, I know that's necessary, but I'm also concerned because it's hard to get ground back that we've lost, and I know that in some areas, some of this equipment was already quite old. I presume that in the event of failure of one of these pieces, it will come back to us as a special item.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, I think as we prepared the budget previously, I shared a similar concern with you, that some of these have been deferred replacements and deferred purchases for quite some time, but even where we find ourselves with COVID-19, we felt like, to my prior comment, that while this may be an overcorrection, I hope it is an overcorrection, now's the time to kind of contract and revisit. So if we have equipment failures, you know, we talked about revisiting our organizational structure, I think we'd be revisiting our services and the necessity of that equipment, but if we conclude that it remains a necessity, then we'll be coming back.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Hodges, do you have any comments or questions? Commissioner Hodges?
I'm fine with the project.
Okay.
Say that.
Yeah, I was saying if you had any, see if you had any questions or any questions for staff.
I'm not sure where I got that, but having discussed these last week, I'm fine with proceeding as it's presented tonight.
Mayor Hoppick, we discussed last week the hike bike trail in Ohio Street, is that, that was the, dealing with the river, does that belong on here, or is that a separate item? Or is it getting late at night, and I'm just not?
Well, I don't recall seeing it in the projects section nor in this section, so.
It was actually adopted under the CIP, but I don't remember from last week if we kind of made that decision. I'll have to go back and look at that.
I thought, I mean, our discussion was not to proceed, I believe, but I didn't know if it had to be part of.
We were not going to proceed with the trail, which was going to use some of those funds, but I'm not sure.
It was going to use some of the state funds.
I'm sorry, Mike Scragg, actually, I think you voted last week to, and you used my phrasing, but to politely decline.
Okay, that's right, okay. I knew we had talked about it, and I couldn't, okay.
And staff proceeded with politely declining.
Okay, now that rings a bell that we, yeah.
Commissioner Davis, I'm going to just take one here, just for example, if the mower snow removal equipment for the cemetery were to just catastrophically break, and it's needed, does that purchase then have to come back here, or are we authorizing you to?
In that scenario.
Approve the purchase, because it would be over your usual spending.
Yes, in that scenario, the first thing I would do is talk with staff about, can we reallocate existing equipment, can we reallocate existing resources in some way to get by without that piece of equipment? But if we conclude that we can't, then yes, we would have to come back to you because it exceeds purchasing authority and get it reauthorized.
Okay. Okay, is there anyone on the line that would like to comment?
I don't see anyone.
Okay, with that, I'll bring it back up to the commission for a motion.
Mayor Hoppick, I move we approve Resolution Number 20-7813, amending the 2020 to 2024 Capital Improvement Program, and approve giving the city manager authority to reduce spending in contractual services and expenditures previously budgeted in 2020.
Commissioner Ryan, I'll second.
Mayor Hoppick, we have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 20-7813. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Did, how about, did, we have Mayor Hodges, or Commissioner Hodges?
I was doing so well at the beginning of the evening, I'm losing steam. Sorry about that.
I was looking at the thing, but I wasn't hearing anything there.
Yeah, I'm sitting here voting by myself, thank you.
I apologize, I'll try to do better.
I take it you said yea?
I did say yea, I voted in the affirmative.
Okay, thank you, okay. Okay, no development business, that leads us to, it looks like, the need for an executive session.
Yes, Mike Scragg here, a couple things. I think if you want to take a five-minute recess and call a 25-minute executive session, we could probably make that work and reconvene here at 8:30. As the evening's gone on, I've realized we have two outside parties that need to call into that executive session, one being Commissioner Hodges, the other being Mitch Robinson with the EDO, and I can't mute as I need to and prevent participants on the call, and I don't want to drop the participants in the call. So what we're going to need to do is I'll put the conference phone on mute so that the listeners on the phone can stay on the line, they won't hear the conversation, and we'll need to have Mitch Robinson and Commissioner Hodges call in on cell phones and have them join the conversation that way. So we'll need just a little bit of time to get all that set up, but if you want to take a five-minute recess and then 25-minute exec session?
Do we need to make the motion first?
Yeah.
If I could get a?
Yeah. Mayor Hoppick, I move we move the City Commission after a five-minute recess, then recess into executive session for 25 minutes, to discuss two separate subjects within the same justification described as follows: Discussion of a pending economic development incentive project involving the prospect's confidential financial information and trade secrets, and presentation and discussion of a newly proposed economic development incentive project involving a different prospect's confidential financial information and trade secrets. This request is based upon the need to discuss data relating to financial affairs or trade secrets of corporations, partnerships, trusts, and individual proprietorships pursuant to KSA 75-4319B4. The open meeting would resume in this room.
Let's say 8:35.
8:35 PM.
Second.
Have a motion, second to recess into executive session after a five-minute break. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. And will be no action taken?
We expect no action, or no additional agenda items, but we will restart the call as if we were reconvening in open session to adjourn when we conclude the executive session. Commissioner Hodges, I'm going to drop you from this call, and then we will call you back on your cell phone.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
Before we go there, I need to give everybody an opportunity to get everything back up and running, and I'll verify that it is.
Well, you guys know how much talk, 10 minutes, 15?
I'd say 15.
15. Um, you know, one second. Scott, can you hear me?
Oh, okay, got you.
Scott, are you there?
Okay, YouTube is up and running, and Slidemedia is up and running.
You must have unmuted your phone, you can hear me on the phone as well?
Is that phone?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
Can you hear us?
Can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
Okay, we're back in session, and we are going to go back into executive session for, we want to do 15?
I think that'd be safer.
15 minutes?
Yep. Mayor Hoppick, I move the City Commission recessing, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Oh, City Commission recessing to executive session for 15 minutes to discuss presentation of a newly proposed economic development incentive project involving a different, I'm sorry, involving a prospect's confidential financial information and trade secrets, based upon the need to discuss data relating to financial affairs or trade secrets of corporations, partnerships, trusts, and individual proprietorships pursuant to KSA 75-4319B4. The open meeting will resume in this room.
8:54?
8:54, thank you.
Do we have a motion, or a second?
Commissioner Ryan, I second.
We have a motion, a second to move into executive session for 15 minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, we'll mute everything and?
Begin. Yeah, the sound room, that phone, that phone.
Okay, Scott, are we back up and going?
I was hoping it was cold and not just windy.
Oh, you're cold?
It's a little chilly in here.
I think it's fine.
I took the liberty of adjusting the thermostat, I'm usually hot.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I haven't muted.
Okay.
Both systems?
Thank you.
Okay, we're back in session, there is no action to be taken with that. Is there any other business to be brought before the commission?
Nope.
If not, accept a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? Do I have a second?
Yeah, I just didn't know if Commissioner Hodges had any, when you asked the question.
Commissioner Hodges, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Okay, okay, we have a motion, second to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?